I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 27, 2006, City Council and Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where all which stands one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're in the crack.
Next item is changes to the order of the agenda. Staff, any recommended changes?
We have none.
None? And any from council members? None? A report from closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is council appointments and presentations. And if I could have Bonnie Adario please come to the podium.
Hi, Matt.
Are you?
I'm good.
Is this on? Yes. Well, folks, I wanted to present Ms. Adario with a proclamation tonight, and I am not going to read all the dry and formal writing that's in here. I'm going to close this and I'll be just giving this to her. But this lady went through a bout with cancer. And after she won her battle, she didn't just simply go off and live her life and enjoy, you know, her days on earth being cured of cancer. But she decided to more than take on the battle medically for herself, and she started a foundation to battle lung cancer. And lung cancer, if I don't know if you know, it has a bit of a stigmatism to it because most people assume that if you have lung cancer, you've gotten your just desserts because you smoke cigarettes, which is not always the case. And that's not the case with Bonnie either. But she has taken on this battle for everybody, and she started this foundation to raise money for research to battle lung cancer. And I can tell you, I've been involved in a number of events like bicycle rides for cystic fibrosis, or MS, or things like that. And very rarely do you get to meet the person who started the foundation to raise the money. And very rarely do you find and discover that the person who started the foundation lives in your hometown. And that's the case here with Bonnie. So I just wanted to have her here tonight, honor her as a citizen of San Carlos, and say thank you for the hard work that you do in the foundation that you started. Bob and I both enjoyed the dinner, the fundraising dinner that we attended. It was a smashing event. And I want to wish you luck in the future with your foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have here, the first item is to call for nominations for mayor, but traditionally, before taking nominations, the outgoing mayor is asked to make a few comments, and so I have some things prepared. And to begin, I just want to sincerely say that it has been a wonderful experience to serve as mayor of San Carlos this past year. We all hear what a great city San Carlos is, and I believe that's true, and I believe it's mostly true because of the good and dedicated citizens that we have living here. And that fact of the great citizens we have here only adds to the honor and the privilege that it is to serve as mayor of this fine city. If I were to sum up my year as mayor in four short words, which I know Mr. Griselli would like, because we would just stop right there, but we're not going to, Bob, I'd have to borrow a phrase from an often used by one of our past presidents, Theodore Roosevelt, who liked to say after anything he did, "It was great fun." Going into this year, I had a number of priorities I personally wanted to fulfill as mayor. And one was to attend as many events as I could that I knew were important to certain individuals. So for example, when I received the invitation to Lynn Gilmore's retirement party, I made sure to attend so that I could speak on the city's behalf and say thank you to Lynn for her many years of loyal service as deputy city clerk. And similarly, when there were three of our police officers who retired, Sergeant Doug Echols, Sergeant Kurt Johansson, and Officer Mike Anton, the whole city obviously could not attend their Sunday brunch retirement party, but as mayor, I could go for you, and I had the privilege of going and speaking on your behalf and giving them their deserved recognition and thanks. There were opportunities to recognize our young citizens, too. There was the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Spencer Albrecht, the award ceremony for our Girl Scouts at Heather School. And just recently, in this room right here, a Cub Scouts meeting where they earned their citizens badges. And the last event I attended was the presentation of the National Blue Ribbon Award given to Central Middle School. All of these events had one thing in common: the joy of sharing a moment in the lives of people reaching a landmark moment. I felt it was important as the mayor to be at these events and to represent the city of San Carlos, to show that we care about individual achievement, which I know that we do. A second priority I had going into this year was to maintain our awareness of our adopted city, Past Christian, to not forget our promise to help them along until they got back on their feet after being devastated by Hurricane Katrina. And to that end, we had our first annual Mayor's Family Fund Bike Ride, in which 98 riders participated and raised $2,345. I'd like to again thank those who helped on that project, including Cheryl Palmerink from the chamber, Barry Weiss from our Parks and Rec Department, Chief Rothaus from the Police Department, and the many citizens who volunteered, most notably Fred Kohler, Dave Tom, and his wife, Chris. And finally, a third priority I had was to give a fair hearing to issues before the council, as much as I possibly could. I endeavored to do this in two ways. The first was with our council meetings. As mayor, my emphasis was to be certain that each of my colleagues had an opportunity to ask questions of staff, and then that we all had a fair opportunity to discuss our views, and if inclined, to persuade each other of a particular viewpoint, or to come to a compromise before a final vote was taken. The second was that I sought to give a fair hearing of issues for the public. That was why we scheduled a number of special meetings using other venues than the council chambers, which we did for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation hearings using the Aviation Museum, and which we did for the turf issue using the youth center. While I know not everyone got to see decisions go their way, I hope that all felt as though they were given a fair opportunity to have their say and had a fair chance to provide input. At this point, I'd like to quickly review the work that we did this year as a council. This is normally the part of the outgoing mayor's speech where all the projects that were built get mentioned. Well, we didn't build any projects this year like in years past. There's no new library, no new youth center, no new grade separation, or downtown streetscape. But we did build. We built a relationship with our new city manager, Mark Weiss, and a fairly new council. Out of that effort came a new way of doing business with the implementation of the council retreats and strategic planning. We endeavored to build a new relationship with you, the public. The result of that effort was a new mission statement and our new customer service policies. And I think related to this is the yet-to-be-completed work that was started by council member Doherty when she was mayor, enhancing the city of good living. And I won't say a great deal about this because I don't want to steal the thunder from our next mayor, who I think may have some plans in this area, if our next mayor is, who I suspect they will be. Last, and importantly, we built a new fire department with our neighboring city of Belmont. And I think that effort also entailed building a new relationship between the two cities that is now healthier than it was a year ago. I'm proud that we have a new fire chief, Doug Frye, and Fire Board Commissioner Bob Griselli and I were honored to be a part of the badge-pinning ceremony where Chief Frye received his badge. Likewise, Bob and I attended the badge ceremony for six new recruits and two returning firefighters. And finally, regarding the fire department, we recently held testing for battalion chief and fire captain positions, and I'm proud to announce that we have three of our own fire captains ready to be promoted to battalion chief, and two firefighters ready to be promoted to captain. There's other work we did, of course, but it's all included in the minutes and captured on tape, and anyone who cares to watch certainly can do so. In closing, I'd like to thank a few individuals who were especially helpful to me this year as I strove to do my job as mayor. Vice Mayor Davids, thank you for being there as one I could always turn to when I needed sage advice. You wisely tempered my positions on some things, and I think events came out better for it. It wasn't often that Tom and I conference, but it was always important that we did when we did, and I appreciate Tom being there for those critical times. Councilmember Griselli, Bob, you also served with me on the fire board. Thank you for all your hard work and committed hours for the fire department, but also for being my go-to guy when I couldn't make it to an event or ceremony I thought was important to attend. And Bob, when you're the mayor, I'll even the score. Thanks. City manager, Mark Weiss, he and I had frequent meetings to set agendas, deal with special issues, and of course, to deal with the fire department. I think I can safely say in front of the public that Mr. Weiss and I did not always see eye to eye on things, but being the consummate professional that he is, we were always able to have a healthy conversation on issues and then move forward to accomplish the tasks at hand. So thank you, Mark, for all your good work and your support. And finally, I'd like to thank the lady seated to my right, our city clerk, Christine Boland. It would take too much time to expound upon all the ways that Christine supports the mayor, but it is only fitting to recognize her for her good work and outstanding effort. Thank you, Christine. Abraham Lincoln, in speaking to an Ohio regiment during the Civil War, referred to temporarily occupying the office of the president. Well, one only temporarily occupies the seat of mayor as well. And although some get to repeat the feat, I don't expect I will. So lastly, I want to thank the citizens of San Carlos. It has been an honor and a pleasure to temporarily hold this office and to serve as your mayor. Thank you. And now, we will...
Mr. Mayor, before you move on and screw it over, I just want to mention a couple of things.
Very well.
It has been a good year. It's been a year of great building, and it's been a year in which you've guided the council as well as the city in doing some important things, particularly with the fire department. I've been impressed with the way that you and Bob took hold of this. Regrettably, the outcome on funding isn't what we would have liked, but we did recreate the department, and we're off to hopefully a good start in keeping it going. And we just need to fill a few holes to do that. Also, the way that you brought forward with strategic planning and continued that process, I thought that was well done. And your dedication to the office. You mentioned wanting to be seen and heard in the community, and you certainly were. And I think the community respects you for that. So thank you very much for the year you gave. It was a good year.
Thank you, Tom. Would any other council members like to make any year-review comments?
Well, I would just say, as an incoming council member, I appreciated the counsel and advice throughout the year, and I appreciated building a relationship with you, and I think you're a very dedicated mayor, and we're all better for your effort, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Brad.
I guess I'll go next. I know, Matt, you and I have not always seen eye to eye, but I certainly appreciate the diversity of opinion and your sort of thoroughness and persuasiveness. So you've done a, having sat in that seat, I know it's not an easy job, especially with some of the issues that we faced this year between the fire department and, gosh, it sure seemed like every time I was turning around, there was another fairly significant issue on the horizon. So you did a very nice job, actually, of steering us through the turf issues and through those public hearings that in itself was a very challenging time, I know, having sat through it as well. So thank you for your year, and I appreciate the work you've done as mayor on behalf of the city and this council.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, you know, again, I've never been mayor. I've just been a councilperson for one year. This was enough work, but Mayor Grocott put an awful lot of work into his job. He was always prepared for any meeting that I attended, including the council meetings. Sometimes he and I might not agree on everything, but we always came to an agreement at the end and consensus of what we were going to do, especially on the fire situation. I don't know what it takes to be a good mayor or a bad mayor, but probably do know what it takes to be a bad mayor. But I would, again, as the other council members indicated, compliment Mayor Grocott on working as hard as a person can work to try to get this council in a positive direction and to get the city in a positive direction. And I think that's the key to leadership, is to try to keep moving forward and try to get things done if possible, but certainly keep moving forward. And I think Mayor Grocott did an admirable job of that, and I thank him for the effort that he put in and look forward to working with him for the next years on the council.
Thank you, everyone, and certainly thank you to my council for all your hard work and effort in going along this year. So I appreciate it. Thank you. With that, we'll now take nominations for a new mayor.
Mayor Grocott, I would offer a nomination, Vice Mayor Tom Davids, for the position of mayor of San Carlos.
I would second. Okay, we have a nomination and a second nomination by Councilmember Griselli and a second by Councilmember Lewis. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that we have a vote.
Do you want to move back to close nominations, then?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
I'll second that nomination, I mean, that motion.
All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now can we have a roll call for the...
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davids?
Okay.
That was enthusiasm.
Sure. Councilmember Teakle Doherty?
Yes.
And Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Tom, you want to come take this seat?
Do we have a nomination?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilman Brad Lewis to be vice mayor for the coming year.
Second.
Brad, would you consent to the duties that are presented to you and promise to do them in your best order?
I do. I would like to make a motion to close the nominations for vice mayor.
Second.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Teakle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes.
Thank you, Brad. Well, actually, I have a pleasure of hearing a few comments from the incoming mayor. And it's traditional in San Carlos that the incoming mayor chairs the first meeting, of course, but then moves into a very important realm of community service, and that is to welcome Santa, who comes to the Hiller Aircraft Museum on December 2. That's Saturday. I'd like to see you all there. The doors open at 9:30. Santa arrives at 10:00, sticks around until about 12:30, gets on a fire truck, and goes over to Santa's house at the Bank of America parking lot, and he'll be there until 3 o'clock. So put that on your to-do list, and if you haven't seen the Hiller Museum, this is a great opportunity to do that. Also, on December 5, Santa comes back and helps us light the tree here in City Hall Park. And that event is scheduled for 7 o'clock. It's always a great community time. Lots of kids, got hot chocolate, we got candy, and it's going to be a great time. So please arrange to come to one or both of those events. I'm sure you'll have a good time. Remember to bring to either one also a non-perishable food item for the Second Harvest Food Bank. We have cans around in the city hall. There will also be cans over at the senior center or the community center when we light the tree on December 5. Or wherever you go, you're going to see cans. Make sure that you take the opportunity to help those out that are not as fortunate as we. So to start this process, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for giving me this appointment to serve as mayor. I will do my best to represent this council as well as the city, as I do the mayoral-type activity. And I want to thank my wife, Carolyn, who's in the audience, for giving me permission to run. You see, this isn't just a one-person deal. Apparently, the memory of political meetings and endless dinners and receptions to all sorts of events has dimmed a bit, but she will quickly reconnect with the process and assist me whenever it's possible, I'm sure. And then I want to thank former mayor Inga Tingle Doherty for giving birth, perhaps I shouldn't say giving birth, for initiating the concept of bringing the community together in town hall meetings to consider and plan for our future. This is the vision in San Carlos, the enhancing the city of good living process we went through a couple of years ago. Inga did a great job pulling that together, and as she moved on past Mayor Matt, continued to develop the process and worked hard to bring together the committee in terms of completing those task force meetings and also in starting our strategic planning function. And also, with all that's been done in the last two years, I really can't think of anything that needs doing. We've pretty much put it all on the table. We're looking forward to moving forward. And so I don't have any new programs that I want to present. All I want to do is challenge the council, as well as the community, that we now need to deliver results on those items that came forward. And with that in mind, we commit no new projects, but a continuation of the building that Matt began and Inga before him. And as that building goes on, we're going to see some exciting new concepts and some exciting new governmental possibilities around San Carlos. At our strategic planning session last August, we adopted five three-year goals, and quickly stated they were as follows: to increase economic development and sources of revenue; to update the general plan and the east side specific plan; to maintain and enhance public safety; to improve the infrastructure; and to enhance internal and external communications and customer service. Now with those five in mind, here would be my 2007 priorities. First of all, we'll continue to work with the three community-based task forces resulting from the enhancing the city of good living initiative. This would be the Building Community Task Force, where we're talking about sort of the community spirit type concept on one hand, perhaps additional town meetings, building the community and protecting the community from natural disaster, better communication through our website and other means. Those recommendations will be coming forward in the next couple of months. Further to that, the Natural Resources Task Force. We haven't reviewed that as a council yet, however, there is a study session being planned, probably for either the next meeting or the first meeting in January, and we'll be reviewing that rather large and challenging documents submitted by the Natural Resources Task Force. And then we have the Flooding, Land Use, and Creeks Committee, which is now meeting on a monthly basis, and they will be making recommendations soon regarding stormwater prevention and attempts and recommendations to cure our flooding problems. So recommendations from these three groups will be reviewed and considered for a future work plan and for budget considerations. The timing on this is such that we can take these recommendations forward into our budget planning for the next fiscal year and get a start at what can be done quickly and perhaps not too expensively, and begin to plan for those that may take more time and more money. Now, second, during the next month, we will authorize a master plan for our parks and recreation programs. And before the year is over, we hope to act on this community-wide plan to deal with all aspects of leisure time and recreation. And we're talking here about potential for a community center, for a swimming pool, for a dog park, for additional turf fields, all those things that we've been talking about individually over the years, and never seem to come together because they're sort of in a vacuum, and they never get addressed as a community-wide effort. And so we've been picking around the edges, and now we hope to bring this home in terms of a master plan for the entire city. And part of this plan, of course, will be to deal with location and funding elements, with the hope that when all is said and done, we can adopt a plan and begin to move forward and bring our park and recreation projects into focus around one central point. Last month, we received a report on a real estate market study that pointed out some interesting opportunities for our east side industrial area. An economic development plan is now being prepared, which will be reviewed by our Economic Development Advisory Committee and presented to the council in April. This plan and the review process will bring the community together as we plan the future of economic growth in San Carlos. And this is important, obviously, for many reasons, but if you remember that 22% of our budget is sales tax revenue and 37% is property tax, we have a total of 60% of our revenue budget that is based upon property values and commercial activity. So it's very important that we deal intelligently and think and thoughtfully about what we're doing on the east side and how we're promoting additional economic stability. A fourth priority for us this year is to begin the process of updating our general plan. It's been many years since we did this. Our planning director, Liz Coleman, will present a schedule to the council by mid-February, and money will be allocated to begin the detailed planning process. And with that in mind, there will be endless public meetings for you all to participate in and be involved in the process of what this community should look like in the future. And finally, we have the ongoing business items which will hold our attention. The new Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department has come together, as we talked about a short while ago. Thanks to the good efforts of Bob Griselli and Matt Grocott, we, along with their counterparts from Belmont, we now have the will to continue with this fire effort. We simply need to deal with the issue of funding and how we're going to either margin down the cost or find some way to fill in the dollars. But that's a process that will be ongoing, and tonight, item 10 on our agenda, will be a discussion of that item. We're also reviewing and continuing to review the Palo Alto Medical Foundation application to build a hospital and a medical center at 301 Industrial Road. Tonight, we'll review an element of that process, which is the development agreement. The final EIR is now being prepared and is due for late December. And if schedule holds, we may be able to, as a council, consider this project on its merits during March or April of next year. By that time, the various hearings will have gone through planning and transportation traffic and so forth. So keep your eye on that. It's been a long go, but it's coming to a close. It's been a long go, but it's coming to a close, and the hearings are about to begin. And then finally, we expect that the railroad land use residential project will be submitted. In fact, I understand it already has, just recently been submitted to the planning department for review. This is the railroad land between the Al Camino and the tracks. It represents primarily the residential housing project, primarily north of Holly Street. But it has some interesting elements, I think, that will be very beneficial to San Carlos. And the design elements, of course, are very important because of its strategic location. It is a transit-oriented development. This is an attempt to locate housing near transportation, and we're looking forward to working with SAM Trans and Caltrain on that project. And so you see, we have a lot of things going. We don't really need any new stuff, and so we will continue to deal with the old stuff and bring it forward as we move into the new year. I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'm sure you all came here just to hear this speech. But in the event you didn't, you probably came for the refreshments and there to follow. And if that wasn't your motive, you probably came here for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation discussion, or the fire discussion. And they will follow soon after we convene. So let us move to refreshments, and perhaps we can bring this meeting back. What do you think, Christine? About 10 minutes till 8? Sounds good. We've got 20 minutes to socialize. 10 minutes to 8, we'll start the meeting. Thank you.
We have a couple of things to say.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll resume our meeting. Thank you for staying for the reception. And we now move forward to Item 6A, which is a report from Economic -- or from the Council Economic Development Subcommittee. Councilmembers Lewis and Griselli did a study of downtowns and we're going to hear about the lessons learned, and Brian's going to take us through that.
Thank you, Mayor Davids. Just to kick this off, as you know, both you and Councilmember Growcott earlier highlighted the strategic plan process, and at your last strategic plan process in August, the council appointed councilmembers Lewis and Griselli to become the council's first economic development subcommittee. And at that time, one of the tasks that you asked them to do is to take a look at nearby downtowns throughout the Bay Area and come back and report to the council and the staff about lessons learned and things that San Carlos might look at to improve and tweak our downtown. So as the staff report indicates, we did look at four downtowns in the area, namely -- and these were downtowns that both councilmembers Lewis and Griselli selected along with the staff. This included Fourth Street in Berkeley, Los Gatos Downtown, Palo Alto Downtown, and Mountain View Downtown. The staff worked with RSG, our consultants on the economic development plan, and along with RSG and the councilmembers, City Manager Bice and I talked with the economic development manager in Los Gatos, and we also had RSG interview the economic development manager in Mountain View on Friday, October 27th, and we also toured these downtowns. And then the following day, on Saturday, October 28th, we accompanied councilmembers Lewis and Griselli on a tour of these downtowns, except for Fourth Street, which we each looked at individually after that time. I think as far as some of the highlights that we picked up from the comments and analysis from the two councilmembers, I think it's fair to say that we took back lessons learned and ingredients, I guess I would say, from each of the other downtowns. So we saw some interesting approaches to landscapes, sidewalk treatments, parks, mix of business types, how parking was provided and displayed. Also, we saw both full and partial redevelopments in different parts of towns, and we noticed that in some towns, there was a mixture of both articulating storefronts, heights, colors, that sort of thing. So I think those are some of the highlights. And again, I think the main conclusion was that there were some lessons learned at each of these communities, but not necessarily any one was something that we would want to replicate completely. So with that, I would turn it over to the council's subcommittee for any additional comments or reports they may have.
So committee members like to add something?
First question. Again, I think when we talk about lessons learned, this is just sort of one component where we can go out and sort of observe different communities and different decisions they've made over the years and how their downtowns work. So it wasn't anything that we did on such a grand level that we came away with major lessons. It was a great opportunity, however, to be with staff and do some observation on how some different towns are approaching economic development. And these are some different downtowns that have, you know, lots of similar situations to San Carlos and have made different decisions over the years on how to allow things to proceed and grow and move forward. Not to speak for both of us, but I think one of the things that Bob and I were both looking at was just what's the feel? What we all talk about in San Carlos is how much we love the village feel or the small-town feel and how friendly it is and so forth. And part of it is looking at -- any kind of a change for a city can be painful, because change generally is painful. But for us, it's like what sort of made the atmosphere? What kind of businesses sat alongside one another that felt good? What were some of the landscaping choices that just felt good and things where we might be able to take some sort of a vision for how San Carlos progresses and moves along? So it was very valuable from that standpoint, and it was valuable just to be together with staff and Councilmember Griselli so we could sort of share some thoughts about that. Each of the towns had some elements of success that we thought were working pretty well. We tried to sort of get an idea why we thought that was successful. Some of it was -- had to do with mature trees and some of the landscape and some of the way that they treated the streets. Some of it was proximity parking to the small towns. Some of it was juxtaposition of maybe some more established change and some of the smaller businesses and so forth that really give towns texture and feel and personal connection. So it was a good opportunity to do that, and I think we made a bunch of notes. And as we move forward for economic development, I think we'll start to fold these things into what some of our plans are going forward, and we'll talk about that as a council as we consider different areas to press forward on as we progress as a city.
Thank you.
I concur. As Councilmember Lewis said, we saw a vast variety with staff of cities. When I walked over on Fourth Street, I don't know how many folks have been over Fourth Street in Berkeley, but that's completely, in my opinion, revitalized area, and they have some larger retailers, a couple at least at the far end, of larger stores. Some of their storefronts are completely remodeled, again, from basic redevelopment all the way up. Los Gatos is an older town, I think, and they, again, revitalized a lot of their city. Mountain View, in my opinion, would be a newer city, where they were able to go and make the sidewalks. I think we mentioned sidewalks were huge, were like double our sidewalks. But they were able to do that because it's a newer place. We went past their Performing Arts Center in the back. It had this beautiful city park. And it's like, well, that's great, but they had the land to do all this. We're a very mature city here in San Carlos. We're not going to be able to raise anything, you know, go and start raising Laurel Street and then start over from the beginning or anything like that. It's not going to happen. We have to work with what we have and the space constraints we have and the height limits we have to try to work and try to get, as Councilmember Lewis said, keep the village feel for it, but yet still try to figure out perhaps how the mix of stores can come in and different -- I know myself, I saw a number of different retailers on all these cities, some of which I thought might fit in San Carlos and others I didn't feel would have any market at all for us, because it's just a different culture perhaps in the city that we're in. But as Councilmember Lewis said, this is one of the beginning steps. Working with staff was also very beneficial so that we could make sure that we could try to get some common ideas and consensus on what, you know, the pros and cons. One of us would say X, and the other would say Y, and we'd kick around. We'd be brainstorming as we're walking down the street. And it's amazing what you can accomplish when you do things like that with four or five people walking down. So I think it was a good first step, and hopefully we can keep this subcommittee moving and keep it going and working with staff and our consultant to try to see what we can do to improve the economic growth of San Carlos.
And the only other thing that I'd like to add is, you know, as we move forward, I think we want to meet in the middle on these things, not just be reactive to opportunities that might come our way, but also sort of try to come up with some sort of a shared vision. And some of these are examples of maybe we want to actually go out and be sort of calling people and having them take a look at San Carlos if we think that there, you know, different areas, whether it's a, you know, it could be a developer, it could be any number of different people to say, hey, what do you think about San Carlos as a potential place? And this is not restricted to downtown as well. There's business in general for San Carlos to help with economic development.
Thank you for your reports. Any questions on that?
I just had one question, actually, and it has to do really more with not just individual components of these downtowns, but were you looking at density and massing and mixed use? Because I know one of the things that we've heard in the past is that, you know, during lunchtime or peak time or dinnertime, there tends to be a lot of people downtown, but the rest of the time, there may not be as many people, and looking at ways to have higher density downtown, maybe in the form of higher heights, things like that. So did you notice that, or did you sort of specifically look for those types of things, as ways to have more people actually be in the downtown area?
We didn't necessarily have a checklist for something like that, and let's make sure we find out about that. We did notice, I know in Los Gatos, there was a newer mixed-use retail and resident area there that was a newer development that we looked at and noted that it looked like what they had done is set back some of the height of the residential, so it seemed to work well with that neighborhood. I don't think there were many other examples. And Mountain View was actually older as far as the residential mix with businesses. There wasn't any new things that we saw around the transit-oriented stuff there. So that was about the only example in those areas. I think the only other thing that we noticed is in Berkeley on Fourth Street, I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's a real nice mix of restaurants and businesses, and it's very walkable. There's lots of independent business owners. There's a couple of chains there. It's got a nice feel to it that in a lot of cases, some of -- in downtown on Laurel Street, some business owners have said it's a shame they can't use their sidewalk front a little bit. It seems like in some of these towns, they're setting back the business a little bit from the street so that there's an area where people can congregate and they take advantage of those things, and it does create sort of a more communal feel, a little bit more space right off the street. So that was a way that it seemed to be, there was a little bit more vitality that was visible and that you kind of felt like you wanted to be a part of because it was adjacent to the street.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Growcott. Okay, then we'll accept the report as submitted. Thank you very much for putting in the time and taking the tour and keep all that memory because as we go down the road of economic development, it will come in handy. So that brings us to the next item, which is Item 7A. This is a review, a presentation on the current status of the development agreement between the city and Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Let me say as we go into this that our discussion at this point is strictly on the development agreement. We're really not talking about traffic. We're not talking about construction dust or any other situation that might arise should this be built. When we complete our review, the staff and council has a chance to ask questions. We will invite public comment. We currently have 24 requests, and we're willing to hear them all. If yours has been stated or you decide not to come forward, please let us know. And if you'd like to make an appearance and you haven't yet signed in, complete a request to speak card over on the table and pass it to staff, and we'll get you on the list. So with that, City Manager Mark Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you indicated, this is just intended as a status report to let the council and the community be aware of the status of negotiations that are being held with representatives from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. As you are aware, there was a preliminary application submitted as far back as 2004, deemed complete in 2005, and we've held a hearing on the draft environmental impact report previously earlier this year. We've outlined in the report some of the steps that have been accomplished and some of the scheduling that is anticipated as the project moves forward. And as you indicated, we would expect the project to be considered on its merits as early as the spring of next year. But while that project has been moving forward in terms of its review, in terms of its environmental impact upon the community, we've noted that the project requires a zone change as well as a general plan amendment. And the nature of the project, the size of the project, the complexity and scope of the project have led us to believe that it is an appropriate project application for consideration of a development agreement that would outline the terms and conditions under which the project might ultimately proceed, provided that the council wanted to consider and approve it at a later date. So one of the primary concerns that I think the community perhaps has had about the project is the fiscal and economic impact. It is a private nonprofit entity as such, would not pay property taxes that might -- other projects might pay if it were to proceed. Certainly, it is in an industrial area that requires the zone plan and planning amendments that I referenced earlier. From our perspective, we looked at the site, the project area that the proposal was being submitted for, and concluded that it would be appropriate if we would take a look at what other projects might also be potentially appropriate for that area and consider what the economic impacts of those project applications might be. Recognizing that -- the economic impacts of those project applications might be, recognizing that during the whole time, that the application that we had was from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation who had ownership rights with the property in question and that alternative uses might not ever be available to the city. But we did think it appropriate to look at what the economic impacts of a variety of different uses might be. And with that in mind, we commissioned an environmental, or I'm sorry, an economic impact analysis by the Kaiser Marston Group and used that as the basis to determine what revenue streams the city might realize if alternative uses such as retail, including some box alternatives as well as auto mall uses, might generate for the city by way of sales tax and property taxes. From that, we determined what potential revenue streams from those types of uses might be for the community and sat down with representatives from the Palo Alto Medical Foundation and started to discuss a development agreement concept that might generate an ongoing revenue stream, similar to what other uses might generate at that location. The results of those discussions is reflected in the term sheet that is included within the report tonight. And the general concept there, we talked in terms of whether or not this agreement should be something that is structured around a cash payment or whether it should be something that would be structured around an ongoing contribution. And recognizing that the city needs to provide services ongoing, police and fire, and the general types of services that the community might expect in terms of parks and recreation, police, fire, administrative services and the like, we need a revenue stream ongoing into the future, we structured a proposal that would set aside a cash contribution, really as an endowment, that as long as the money is set aside, as long as the money is invested, it would generate an ongoing revenue stream. The values that have been represented within the report would be a $9 million contribution as the base endowment that would be set aside in the fund, invested on the city's behalf, recognizing that if the city invested it itself, due to the conservative nature of our financial investment policies, we might expect 5%, something like that in today's market. That would only generate $450,000. Kaiser Marston report indicated that other uses might generate more than that, up to $700,000, $770,000 perhaps per year. And so we continue to work with that concept and came up with a proposal that would guarantee the city, as long as that $9 million was invested, a guaranteed revenue stream using the proceeds from the investment return on that endowment. But if it were not sufficient to meet the target revenue stream that we were looking for, that the Palo Alto Medical Foundation would make up the difference. And the revenue stream that we've looked at within the document would be $630,000 from the $9 million investment, plus a use tax provision that would generate another $152,000, so that there would be a base amount of $782,000. That would be your annual revenue stream that, you know, once we're up and running at a fully stabilized entity. And then we've inflated that to try to make some representative effort to keep up with cost of living adjustments, a 2.5% inflation factor upon $630,000 value and a 3% inflation factor on $152,000 value. In addition to that, there is a one-time guaranteed during the construction period of $770,000, if memory serves me correct, from the use tax concept. And above and beyond that, there are other contributions that are pledged within the term sheet, including a $1 million contribution towards improving athletic facilities and a $1.5 million contribution towards the San Carlos Educational Foundation for health-related programs in the San Carlos schools. Now, the project term sheet, as it's currently envisioned, would allow the $9 million to be accessible to the city if it chose or if it needed those cash proceeds at any given time. But obviously, if you were to take those monies out of the endowment, you could no longer count upon or rely upon the revenue stream moving forward. And so it's our thought that using the endowment, having the guaranteed revenue stream as if this were a very large retail project or an auto mall project or something of that nature would be in the best interest of the city of San Carlos. This is the term sheet. It's not an agreement. It's certainly not in final form. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in order to get it in that state. We're prepared at the staff level to move forward with it pending direction otherwise from the City Council. Staff is here, special legal counsel, the city attorney. The city staff that have been working on various aspects of the project are here in attendance this evening to answer any questions that the City Council might have.
Thank you, Mark. Who'd like to go first?
I guess I will. I had a couple of questions with respect to some of the specifics within the agreement. No opinions really, just, first of all, 1A, just a question about why the $9 million, which is the original endowment amount, proposed endowment amount, is staggered? $5 million in the first, it looks like the first year, and then the remaining $4 million within three years thereafter? Can you explain the rationale behind staggering the amount or splitting it?
It ended up being a negotiated term as to when the monies might be submitted. I think from, you know, and probably is a question, certainly from the city's standpoint, the sooner that we would get the money and have the revenue stream, the better. The details in terms of how that will be tied to the annual contribution have yet to be worked out and would be negotiated further as we proceed with the actual development agreement contract. But from the foundation's perspective, I trust that until they're up and operational, the preference would be that the contributions not be available in their entirety. Much like any other kind of a project, you wouldn't expect the full project to be generating the full sales tax or transient occupancy taxes if it were O-Tel until the operation, you know, until the project was complete and until the project had stabilized.
So, but in the meantime, they're willing to guarantee a targeted rate of return of $630,000?
But not starting, I think, until 2010. Again, the details of that need to be worked out in terms of when exactly this will all commence. And it will be predicated, frankly, upon when the project approvals are granted and if the project approvals are granted.
Yeah, actually, it's the use taxes that are beginning in 2010, but it's actually in 1A, I, or lowercase 1, it says that it's targeted, the targeted rate of return shall be established at $600,000 in the first year plus a 2.5% inflationary. So my assumption is that Palo Alto Medical Foundation then is sort of willing to backfill the amount since the endowment isn't going to be the full $9 million?
I'm not going to pretend to speak for them, and until we work out the final terms of the agreement, I wouldn't make that representation. If that's the council's objective, we will certainly work to that end.
Okay. And then the second question I had actually had to do with Subpoint Number 7, still kind of within that same area. And it has to do with on January 1st, 2040, 50% of the principal balance of the endowment in excess of the $9 million should be paid to PAMF. So that's assuming that it's going to continue to grow, or that's assuming that if the rate of return exceeds what has been guaranteed to the city during that period of time, that the balance then would remain within the endowment?
The discussions have gone along the lines of this being a 30-year agreement and that the $9 million would always be available to the city and would be available at the end of the 30-year term. The Palo Alto representatives have indicated that they believe that if properly invested, that the returns might be sufficient to far exceed the target, the $630,000 annual contribution, in which case those monies would go back in and supplement the principal, so the $9 million would grow and would then be used to generate a larger principal amount from which we would then be able to get the annual target proceeds from the endowment contribution. The proposal here would be that if that amount were to grow substantially beyond the $9 million, that the city and the Palo Alto Medical Foundation would share in the proceeds above and beyond the $9 million base endowment that had been pledged. But it assumes that that has grown sufficient not only to cover the amount that might be anticipated from the $9 million, but that it would be sufficient to actually allow that original endowment to grow. For example, at 5%, if the $9 million were only generating 5%, that would only be $450,000 a year, and yet Palo Alto is pledging $630,000 as the base amount. So in order, and then that assumes a 7%. Now, if you grow at 8% or 9% or 10%, then those additional monies might go and supplement the principal amount, and it would be that growth that you would pursuant to this proposal share with them at the end of the term of the agreement.
And so as of December 31st, 2039, I assume that's the ending date of the agreement or anticipated ending date of this agreement?
Anticipated at this point, yes.
Okay. And then my last question actually has to do with the $1.5 million to the San Carlos Ed Foundation. Is there going to be a separate agreement with the Ed Foundation, between the Ed Foundation and PAMF, to regulate those funds, or that's outside the purview of this?
We simply haven't gotten into that level of discussion yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. So to follow up on the end of the term thing, that's sort of, what, beyond the $9 million being available in San Carlos, what happens at the end of that term, assuming that, you know, in this scenario, PAMF would be there and in place? Going forward, what, what do we do?
Well, you would still have the $9 million and your share of whatever proceeds above that to invest in any manner that you would choose.
Right.
But the guarantee in terms of the, and the guarantee and the annual growth beyond at 2.5% or 3% would no longer be part of a valid agreement.
Right. So the, there's 2.5% inflation adjustment for the yearly amount.
Correct.
But there's not a 2.5, there's no inflation in that $9 million ever. That stays the same?
It stays the same unless the returns are such that it...
And we split those proceeds.
Exactly.
Great. Okay, so at that point, though, we have, and I guess this is probably longer than most businesses stay in business, but I guess I'm just wondering, and then what? In other words, should we have, and I don't know exactly what that is, but has there been any discussion about moving forward? Or perhaps would there be an event that could happen that might trigger an extension of this deal? Do you know what I mean? Like if there was a, again, some major renovation 50 or 20 years from now or some such thing, would that, maybe we should consider a trigger clause to talk about extending the deal?
And I mean, it's great discussion because the attorneys, I think, are all in the room and listening for these kinds of ideas. And the answer is, is yes, you can put triggers into this that if there were substantial changes to the project, that it would trigger a revisitation of the development agreement. Exactly what those terms might be, we simply haven't gotten to yet. And the, you know, the then what question is, I think, a legitimate question, and yet, and we did talk about longer terms. I mean, at one point, we were looking at a 50-year term instead of a 30-year term, for example. The difficulty with that is that many of the financial agreements that we were able to find at the staff level, frankly, were at 30-year, at the outside. You don't find many agreements of this nature that, at least we didn't find many, that go into the 50 and beyond term. And so, and finally, I should note that even if we were looking at an alternative use, I mean, here you've got a cash contribution, you've got an endowment. There are certain advantages to this kind of a proposal than any other project might provide the city. Retail projects, for example, that come on board oftentimes are good for 10 or 15 years and then need to be regenerated in some form, either relocated or rebuilt or recreated in some form in order to stay competitive. The auto mall industry is famous for the development agreements or business deals from community to community as they're learned from one community to another, and the cash contributions that are required in many communities in order to provide an incentive for those kinds of developments to move into your community. So we're, in effect, you're sharing property tax that may or may not occur, dependent upon how competitive that retail use or auto mall use might be. This obviously is a different entity in a lot of different ways, but it provides you with an endowment that if something does happen in the industry, you have a cash contribution upfront, and there are guarantees anticipated that, you know, need to be finalized, need to be formalized, need to be guaranteed and protected legally, that will provide some assurance that you will have a revenue stream coming from the project moving forward.
Could the chair may ask a following question? I find it hard to believe that we're comparing a hospital-type use with an auto mall because I don't believe a hospital is going to pick up and go in 10 years. Just for a point of reference, how long has Sequoia Hospital been at that location?
I would have, we have no...
Staffs, can anyone know?
I think it's a more than 50 years, certainly.
So clearly, this is a, I think Brad brings quite a valid point, which is 30 years may be, you know, a very small time in that this is a project that, should it be approved and should it move forward, would have sustained possible impacts to the community for 50-plus years. So I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
My other question surrounds, maybe you can just give me a little bit more information that's in the deal about if, going from a nonprofit to a profit status? And in just reading through this this afternoon a little bit more carefully, can you describe maybe what, if that happened, how it maybe fundamentally affects the terms of this?
And that was the product of some of the discussions since latest last week in terms of how would we deal with that kind of a scenario? And as we have represented it here, the thought is, is that if it would convert from a private nonprofit to a for-profit and be subject to property taxes, that those property taxes would be recognized as a revenue stream by the city and credited towards the guaranteed revenue stream that is included within this agreement? So that you wouldn't end up getting both, the, both, but that you would indeed still get the revenue stream that was being pledged as part of this agreement?
Right. So my question, when it says PAMF, in this case, would not have an obligation to compensate the city for shortfall in that return? In other words, does that work in reverse as well? In other words, I understand if the city's receiving, and perhaps you've run a scenario against it, so it answers the question, but if what we are receiving from that property exceeds what we're getting now, that makes sense. If it were in reverse, if they didn't match up, in other words, we weren't getting as much as what was guaranteed in the contract, right now I read this as not having an obligation to pay for that difference. So that's the only thing I think that we should take...
I guess through the chair, if I could comment, Councilmember Lewis, I think what we were envisioning, and again, remember, this is all in draft form, if, for example, PAMF somehow lost their property tax exempt status and the property came on the roll, the property, for example, was purchased for roughly $24 million, as we understand, we understand that the amount to be spent on the building improvements is on the order of several hundred million dollars perhaps, that would suddenly take the property from no property tax, which it is today, because as you know, a month ago, they closed, so it's now gone to zero for the city. Suddenly, it would be $240,000. So the staff's vision would be, we would want to craft that language in such a fashion that Palo Alto Medical would get credit, if that's the right term, for $240,000 towards the annual guaranteed endowment payment.
That's correct. It would be towards the guaranteed so that you would still have the guarantee. And that was the intent of our discussions, and there are representatives from Palo Alto here as well, that if they have a different representation on it or take on it, they can...
And any other attributes going for profit that might affect this? Was that the...
That was what our discussion centered on, so I don't, I'm not aware of others that we might contemplate.
Okay, well, that's it for now for me. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilkott?
Yes, I had just one question related to the topic of giving us the city the freedom to take money out of the endowment. I suppose that's there just to, it's not that we would necessarily do that, and certainly there would be discussion later perhaps if this whole thing goes forward, where we might, as a council, want to set some policies for ourselves and future councils on how that $9 million should be handled. Is that what the staff is thinking?
And I think that's fair. You know, we talked...
You know, we talked, this has been a true negotiation, in terms of trying to figure out a way that works for, best for all parties. And originally, we talked about a contribution that would simply be held by the city and invested by the city, and then we looked at the returns, and there were some sense that the returns could be better if they were invested in a private arena, yet we wanted the guarantee. Certainly, though, there was an understanding that if we took the nine million, that you couldn't take the, the endowment, and then expect a return at the same time. We certainly haven't gotten to a point to even address the details on that. I mean, if you were to take 2 million, does that mean pro-rata reduction in the return that would be guaranteed? We haven't gotten into that level of detail at this juncture, but we wanted to come forward and share with you where we were on the discussions as early as possible.
And, in a similar way, it talks about the city manager becoming the sole executive of the endowment in the future, which is fine for this document, but is, is the thinking of staff that, some, you know, before that happened, we might want to create some kind, you know, the council might want to create some kind of executive board to oversee the endowment. I would just be a little wary of having one person in charge of the whole thing.
Certainly, from a staff perspective, we would be open to that. We, you know, the, the only discussion point, perhaps, would be to make sure that it is a body that can, can act in an appropriate timeframe, and, and...
But, so I guess my question is that, I, am I understanding it correctly, that the language in here is so that it's between us and Palo Alto Medical to give us some freedom as a city, and not tie our hands relative to Palo Alto Medical?
I think to have oversight and insight to how the monies are being, are being invested, how they're being used, yes. The intent, you know, again, I mean, there, there's many ways to approach this, and one thought would, as I indicated, would have been simply for there to be a cash contribution, and then the city would, would have full discretion over the use of funds, and yet, under the current market, the return that we would expect would not generate the kind of return that's being pledged here. And so, what's being proposed here is, is our best effort in order to generate that ongoing revenue stream that grows, much like you would expect a retail project to grow with inflation over time, and to provide an ongoing revenue stream that the city can rely upon for the provision of services, both to this project and to the community at large.
And then the, the last question I had, if we did take the nine million, and withdrew some of the money, for example, let's say we bought some land, and then with that land, we developed a land lease development agreement, similar to what we're doing out there on industrial and Holly Street, where developer comes in and builds something, it's our land, we keep the land, but they get to lease it. We might consider doing something like that, it might be a good investment. It sort of takes it out of the realm of the endowment. Palo Alto Medical would have no rights to the income from that type of setup. Is that correct?
And that's my understanding of the proposal, yes. If you could take the nine million, and if you could get a better return with another investment, or just needed the money, that you'd be able to do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss, I just had a, just one que, a basic question, and I think I understand the answer, but, the first year, let's just assume we're, we're into this, and it's approved, and the first year, it makes 9 percent instead of 7. That'd be like $810,000. The city would get $630,000, and $180,000 would be added to the endowment.
Correct.
So it'd be, it'd be, it'd be 9, 180.
Right.
The next year, we only make 5 percent, and for, for argument purposes, I'll just say 450, because I want to make it easy math. So now, they would have to go up with $180,000. Would that come from the endowment? They would give us that 180 that they had sitting in the endowment, and it would lower the endowment back to 9 million?
That's not the way that I would anticipate that it would work. I think that the endowment would, would continue to grow, provided...
So we only have an upside, we don't have a downside?
Well, I, see, I do think that there could be, depending upon how risky the investment is, I do think that there is an opport, or the potential, that, that the 9 million could actually lose money. I mean, if you had it in a very risky kind of venue...
I understand.
So, under that scenario, though, the guarantee would still be in place, and so Palo Alto would simply write a larger check.
I understand. I'm just trying to say that with, from the city's standpoint, our risk is nominal, we have only an upside. In other words, the, the endowment's going to continue to grow in the good years, and it's, it's not going to be withdrawn, in other words, those funds to make up for, let's say, bad investment of the endowment, so to speak.
I, I would not anticipate that we would take from the endowment to make the annual payments, no.
That's my question. I didn't, I, you know, just...
I haven't negotiated the finer points.
I understand that. I'm just asking you what you thought the opinion was.
Mark, with all due respect, that's actually stated in the last paragraph here on the first page. It says, "If the actual rate of return for the year, based on the compounded return of the endowment exceeds the target amount, it should be retained in the fund as a reserve to provide income to the city during future years in the event of a shortfall in earnings." So, the scenario that you just described is exactly how this agreement is...
Well, that's why I asked the question, because that's what I, I read. I wasn't trying to trick you or anything, I was just trying to, I was trying to understand, because that's how I read it, that they would, if they were short the second year, it would come out of the endowment, the 180 would come out to make up for their, for the shortfall. So that endowment wouldn't necessarily continue to grow in a bad year. Or just, at the bottom of page one, is where Councilwoman Doughty is reading, and I was reading too.
Okay, I guess, it is something we'll have to discuss. I wasn't thinking of it in terms of using the endowment to make up for the...
I understand.
Extra check.
Right.
It was determined that if there were the shortfall, Palo Alto would make up the difference.
I understand. I wasn't trying to put you, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it, because that's what appears, it appears to be that that's, but, again, as you said, this is a working document. This is not in, in stone. We're just trying to talk about in generalities here of, of what they're trying to do.
And, like I say, it's a good question, because in that, it's just a working document, and having this kind of a discussion helps us all understand what's here, and the fact that it's being recorded, and, recorded and taped, will have us...
And having been through...
Able to go back to it.
Having been through some of these discussions in my other life, when you're in the discussions, those things, you, you discuss 30 things, and one thing gets written down, and you may be remembering the 29th thing, or the 30th thing, or whatever, and we're looking at it for the first time. We have a big advantage, quite honestly, over you, I think, because we're, we're only got one thought in mind here. So I, like I said, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I was just trying to understand...
Yeah, through the chair, I'd also point out, at the top of page two and item three, it also talks about other ways that Palo Alto Medical would make up the difference. So it, I'd read those two sections together.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Just have one question, Mark, regarding the year 2010. Is that a negotiated year, is any, any purpose for that year?
You know, we really haven't focused on that as part of the negotiations. It's been something that's been put out there, given the current understanding of where the project is, when it might be approved, when it might be constructed. Now, I think, in, in all actuality, that is all subject to change, either in terms of the, the review period that is necessary, or with respect to any challenges that might come forward on the project, the timeframes that might be necessary to move the project forward if it is ultimately approved. I mean, all of those various scenarios need to be contemplated in a formal agreement that will go much farther beyond what is here tonight.
Right. Okay. On the, the question of completion, we're probably looking at, at a few years downstream from 2010 before the hospital would be completed, or the medical center would be completed if it's, if it's approved at all, correct?
I think that's fair, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So the deal points seem to me to be, on the contribution side, we have $9 million coming into the endowment fund, we have $1 million going to the city for improvement athletic fields and facilities, and we have a million and a half going to the San Carlos Educational Foundation for Health-related Programs. And that's, that's the money coming in...
Correct.
Between A point and 2010. And on the income side, we're looking at 630,000 inflated by 2 and 1/2 percent a year for the duration of the deal, which is 30 years.
Correct.
And on the use tax, we have another 152,000 inflated by 3 percent a year.
Correct.
And that's, those are the, the major dollar amounts, as we, we see the, the proposal now. Okay, any other questions for Mark? All right. We, we do have some representatives of PAMF in the room. Would any of them like to comment on this before we move to public comment? We move forward. Thank you very much. Then we will move forward with public comment. I would ask you, again, to keep your comments relative to the development agreement. That's our discussion point for tonight. And I'd ask you to keep your comments to two minutes, and I'll remind you kindly if you're going much beyond that. And so with that in mind, I will start at the top, and we'll work through the list. I have Phil Mareska, Chris Ruthman, and Wayne Kennedy as the first three. And I mentioned to the speakers that we don't typically have a lot of dialogue going with the speaker during this time of public comment. We may ask you a question if we're confused on your, on your proposal or your address, but we basically are taking input, we're making notes, we're listening carefully, and then we'll move on to the next speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Well, given that, though, we're not to talk about the environment or traffic and that, so I'll shorten my talk a little bit here. However, my name is Phil Mareska, and my wife and I have been residents of San Carlos for over 30 years, and in addition to that, have been patients, using the medical services of Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and have been very satisfied with the treatment that we've gotten there. So I'm for the proposed medical center, and I think because it brings many positives, and we've just heard from a very tangible standpoint, the significant amount of money being guaranteed to the community, which I thought was quite nice. So, in addition to that, some of the, maybe, well, I guess it would be a tangible, it's bringing to our community a state-of-the-art, first-class medical facility, which, when you consider some of the alternatives of, you know, large retail operations and office complexes that tend to be undistinguished from many that are going up around here, we have something that I would say would be kind of a flagship operation. So, as I say, skipping over some of the other things, in terms of the environment and traffic and local business impact, which I think there are some very positive things that the facility brings to that, and I won't belabor the point with regard to those items. So in conclusion, as I would say, as being longtime residents of San Carlos, my wife and I, we would welcome having a convenient access to such a top-notch medical center that's being proposed. And in addition to that, I think we would be very proud to have such a facility in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Ruthman?
Thank you. I'm Chris Ruthman. I live at 1943 St. Francis Way. This PAMF, PAMF proposal has generated much discussion in the community about whether we can protect our San Carlos quality of life if we have this degree of change. The reality is, is that we do not have enough money to maintain our quality of life unless we have change, which is to say, development at a level that is commensurate with the PAMF proposal. It appears from the information available that PAMF may be willing to agree to the financial commitments to make it as if it were a tax-paying operation. There are two aspects of the potential deal with PAMF, however, that make it better financially than if it were an auto mall or a Walmart. First, the revenue from the operation is going to be guaranteed for up to 30 years by an extremely strong entity. I do not know of a tax-paying business that I could get for development that would make such a guarantee. And second, San Carlos is not just receiving equal or better income than it would receive otherwise, it is also getting an asset, which is to say, a business that won't go out of business, namely, the $9 million endowment, as well as the other significant contributions to school and city services. It is difficult to imagine another party agreeing to such a financial boon for the city, and in the process, meeting our growing service needs, as opposed to our less essential consumption needs. To conclude, I would like to raise two issues for the potential development agreement. One, San Carlos should have some say over the management of the endowment funds during the period of PAMF's income guarantee. Unfortunately, we all know stories of such public investment monies being dissipated without sufficient redundant management oversight. And two, I hope that the development agreement provides that San Carlos will have the ability to pledge PAMF's credit guarantees to secure bond financing without taking money out of the endowment for infrastructure improvements on the east side, which will be needed, incidentally, whether or not this site is developed. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Wayne Kennedy, followed by Saul Cutner, followed by Fred Cataro.
Yes, my name is Wayne Kennedy. I live at 371 Elm Street. I'm here to support the project. I, I think it's very well thought out, it's, the need is there, it'd be a great asset to the city, and it has broad public support. My question is, why is the planning process taking so long? You seem to be moving at a snail's pace. I first got involved in supporting the project when it was announced. Some neighbors and I made up our own independent petitions, we went around the neighborhood, and we approached about 150 people. They all thought it was a wonderful project, they signed the petition with one exception, and he since has come around and supports the project. Since that time, over 5,000 people have signed their names to petition, supporting this project. A recent poll showed that 70% support the project. And the people I initially approached asked me, "Well, whatever happened to that project? That sounded great, what, whatever happened to it?" Well, and then when we're told that Mountain View handled a similar application from PAMF the same year, they approved it a year later, they're going to be in operation probably before we're done with our hearings. So I think there's, there's something wrong with the planning process. Did we get addicted to the 2 million in planning fees? Did we lose sight of the, the bigger object of getting this wonderful project approved, built, and in operation? So that would be my question. Why has it taken so long, and can't we do better? Is that, is Mountain View that much better in, in planning things, projects of this size? You know, where, where is the, the difference within this tale of two cities? So I hope that you would look at the planning process and speed up this project, because to build benefit is not, is not in endless meetings and collecting planning fees, but are getting this project off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Saul Cutner, followed by Fred Cataro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city clerk, and attendees. After the first three speakers, I think we're due for a reality check. If I run more than my two minutes, I would appreciate the courtesy of the following speaker, maybe give him up the time, so I can finish. I think we can work that out. My name is Saul Cutner. I live in, on Elm Street, right across the street. My business is on Industrial Road. Been a resident of San Carlos for 32 years, have a good feel for the community. I have reviewed the term sheet issued for the development agreement between the city of San Carlos and the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. I must tell you, I am very disappointed in the deal that was negotiated with PAMF. It's a poor deal, and one that PAMF can easily, easily financially double or triple. Remember, PAMF is not a hospital. PAMF is a business. It is a business to make money, and it makes a lot of money. Last year, PAMF made a profit, a profit of $79 million. So the 25 million we're talking here is only 1/3 of what it made last year, and that was coming down the road. And it paid no taxes on $79 million. In the next 30 years of this agreement, I estimate PAMF will earn between 2 and 2 and 1/2 billion dollars, between 2 and 2 and 1/2 billion dollars profit that it paid no tax on in the next 30 years. What they paid the 25 million will be just a drop that's gone down the river, and they go from there. What are you thinking? If that is the best the city can do in negotiations, the best is not good enough. When this deal, that you're so proud of, was done, PAMF must have had a big laugh at our expense. It's a great deal for PAMF, it is not a great deal for the city. Now, let me ask you, who do you listen to? You don't listen to your own economic development advisory committee? On PAMF issue, you ignore them? You don't respond to input? You don't respond to input from the Harbor Industrial Association, and they will be adjacent neighbors to the PAMP facility, you ignore them? You don't respond to the traffic mitigation program proposed by your own ER consultant, which you're not going to do? You don't follow the advice of your own economic development consultant who does not support the PAMP facility? You won't even consider San Carlos Citizens Advisory Group to give some input? Exactly who do you listen to? PAMP really could care less about San Carlos as a resident. PAMP is a business, and it wants San Carlos to promote its business plan, and it's a good plan for PAMP. PAMP is playing you, and you don't even know it. The site is a prime piece of property. It is a golden location for PAMP. PAMP will gain a tremendous advantage in its business with that location. They should not buy it for a whole lot less than its opportunity value. As for the agreement, you have done San Carlos a disservice. Nowhere in the preamble is there a statement about the common good of San Carlos. There is a paragraph that allows the city to spend the principal amount and just reduce PAMP's obligation, in which case the city may get much less than twenty-five million dollars. Also, there's no indication how the city intends to use these funds.
Mr. Cutner, you've had three minutes. Please wrap it up if you want.
Is there someone who'd like to give up their time and let me go for another minute? Thank you. With your courtesy, thank you very much. There's no mention of the negative impact on San Carlos' quality of life. The preamble doesn't talk about quality of life, doesn't talk about what's good for San Carlos, talks about a deal. So where's this additional income to be used that you take from the endowment? Will it be used to reduce the deficit, or is it to promote a pet project like a new city hall? There's no mention of negative impact, just improve the athletic field and the nursing facilities. That's very nice, it makes you feel good, but it's not what it's really all about. Are we so poor we can't fund these needs? In particular, there's no mention of the worsening impact on gridlock traffic. That will be a disaster for us, but you're willing to accept that. What are you doing, and where's your vision? By the time the city wakes up to this, it will cost all of the twenty-five million dollars just to deal with these problems, but there won't be enough money left to pay for it. You have your head stuck up in the clouds. Wake up and deal with the problems. You sold San Carlos down the river, and don't be proud about that. Either negotiate a better deal, or take credit for selling out San Carlos. Remember-
Your time's up, Mr. Cutner.
PAMP is a pied piper. Don't follow the pied piper. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cataro? And Mr. Fred Cataro, followed by-
Read the thing, there's supposed to be no applause, pro or negative. My name is Fred Cataro. I've lived on Chestnut and Howard for almost forty years. I've spoken in regard to the hacienda apartments and various other things. I feel very strongly about this PAMP proposal. Number one, I think that I agree very much that this proposal should be decided pretty soon. It's been almost three years now. Realize that it costs a lot of money both ways, and rather than just keep wasting money to the point where one, either you or the medical facility will say, "We can't afford this anymore, because we're losing money every day." So I recommend that you think about moving this along. I agree with that. The other thing is, any city can have a mall, an auto mall. Any city can have a big box store. This is something, a privilege that we are offered, to have a respected facility like this. We're going to need it, because Sequoia or Kaiser alone cannot afford the technology that's coming. They're going to have to share, you know, medical equipment is going to cost so much that sooner or later, one hospital will say, "We'll buy this forty-million-dollar item, and you buy that forty-million-dollar item, and together we will provide the services." Lastly, I think the deal is wonderful, they have shown good faith, certainly better than any other business would have offered at this point. And to speak to this last comment that was made, I don't think it's fair to look at what somebody or what some business makes and set the taxes, what you expect to get from that business based on what they make. It's what the property is worth, and what you would get normally for any business in that, and it should be within that framework. The fact that Palo Alto Medical Foundation makes billions of dollars should not cause you to want more. I think it's a fair thing. Thank you.
Next up, we have Marie Rosecrans, Pam Gallant, and Dorothy Shoup. And for the record, I should have had everyone identify themselves before they speak, so if you just give your name and you come up and carry on.
Hi, I'm Marie Rosecrans. Mayor, council members, you know, my name is Marie Rosecrans. I live at 250 Ruby in White Oaks, here in town. Both my husband and I have been very supportive of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation ever since I had my first child at the Sutter Facility, California Pacific Medical Center in San Francisco. When we moved to San Carlos, my family and I became patients of Palo Alto Medical Foundation. The care that we have received there has been nothing short of exceptional. I have found their physicians and staff to be incredibly thorough, detail-oriented, warm, and professional. Moreover, their use of technology in their delivery of medical care is unparalleled. The development agreement before you, in many ways, is really generous. While there are no silver bullets in managing a city budget, any project that is going to provide our town twenty-five million dollars in community benefits, bring a world-class health facility to San Carlos, and create over thirteen-hundred good, high-paying jobs should be welcomed. In fact, they're going to be spending money downtown, which is even more revenue for us. As my son is going to be entering kindergarten next year, I began to research the public school system here in town. One of the many things that seems to be working well with PAMP is their partnership with the San Carlos School District and the San Carlos Educational Foundation to present free parent education workshops. As a parent raising children in and for the twenty-first century, I feel like I can really use an outsider's perspective and really benefit from the learning opportunities that those workshops support. PAMP received the San Carlos School District Superintendence Award in 2005 and 2006 in recognition of their support of the parent education programs. Many parents, myself included, feel that PAMP's work to date with the school district and the educational foundation are really a strong indicator of the type of community member and neighbor they are going to be, when they hopefully become official members of the community. More to the point, PAMP's contribution of one-point-five million dollars to the educational foundation to support health-related programs in the San Carlos schools, along with providing a registered nurse to our elementary and middle schools, is exactly the type of commitment I want for anyone hoping to come to San Carlos. I ask that you support this development agreement and anticipate that you will do whatever you can to bring Palo Alto Medical Foundation to San Carlos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dorothy Shoup? Dorothy's followed by David Warren and by John Buchanan.
Good evening, I'm Pam Gallant. I'm a resident of San Carlos.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, go right ahead. I missed your, I passed over you. You're on.
Okay, thank you. I've been a resident of San Carlos for seven years, and I was a resident of Belmont for ten years prior to that. My background is in the healthcare, I was educated as a nurse. I am very excited about the thought of having a state-of-the-art hospital in San Carlos. I would encourage the council to take this time while there is money guaranteed by Palo Alto Medical Foundation to allow our city to plan for that area. I see Nectar at one end, and I see the Palo Alto Medical Facility with inpatient, outpatient, and research at the other end. And I think that we have, this city has the opportunity, and I encourage you to have the vision to look at that area and take the time while we have generated income to support other businesses in the health-related fields, that this corridor could become an amazing health-related corridor and put San Carlos on the map for state-of-the-art visionary work. I also believe that the employees of all of these facilities will need places to eat, et cetera. So I would not be surprised if other retail businesses choose to open up or relocate to that area to help support future employees that may be generated by Palo Alto Medical Foundation facility and other potential health-related facilities that may open along that corridor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Dorothy Shoup, followed by David Warren and John Buchanan.
Mr. Mayor, I believe she has left.
Okay. Then we're David Warren.
Mr. Warren left also.
And John Buchanan. John will be followed by Jeff Grace and Colleen Stewart.
Mayor David's in council. My name's John Buchanan, I live at 48 Chilton Avenue, San Carlos. I recently read with growing interest and amazement the proposed economic package for PAMP's San Carlos Center. It's quite a package that your staff's developed for the city, and I congratulate them. I think Brian, and Mark, and Liz, and others have done quite a good job to this point. In its amounts and diversity and stability, it exceeds your benchmark uses of an auto mall or the big-box-style retail center that you used. In fact, just from the stability angle, it represents a far superior tax base than these other uses, because these are prone to folding and leaving during bad times. In fact, I can't imagine a GM dealership or a Walmart ever getting involved in an agreement of the scope that PAMP has developed with you. Sorting out the economic benefits and balancing them with the environmental impact mitigations will be a challenge for you in the future, I know. But I trust you'll always keep in mind the benefits to the city of both the use itself, as well as the revenues. It's interesting, they're often these complex decisions get confused by outside input that is based sometimes on purely personal, or at other times, external institutional agendas. And these always seem to hide under the cover of environmental or economic issues. Unfortunately, these hidden issues are neither solvable by the council or even germane to the creation of a plan of development, the kind of thing you're going to be working on. As an example, for instance, one comment I recently read in the newspaper stressed that we needed infrastructure, not feel-good things such as nurses and police officers. It's a perplexing statement. Maybe wishful thinking to have a city of all infrastructure and no pesky people in the way. Who could love that? Well, maybe a city engineer, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Jeff Grace. And Jeff is followed by Colleen Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jeff Grace, San Carlos. I request that the city council authorize the staff to continue work on the development agreement with Palo Alto Medical Foundation. There's several issues you need to consider as part of this ongoing development of this agreement. I'll address one issue. And this is the opportunity to enter into a partnership with Palo Alto Medical Clinic for the health and well-being of the citizens of San Carlos, in particular, the youth of San Carlos. As a longtime advocate of youth and youth activity in San Carlos, and as a member of this field committee for analyzing the athletic field in San Carlos, I don't think it's any secret, especially with this council, is where I stand with fields and youth activities in San Carlos. As I said, this is an opportunity to be a partner in the health and fitness of San Carlos, and the one-million-dollar contribution as part of this term agreement will go a long way towards the field development that was identified as part of the field committee's work for nine months. So with that said, I would encourage once again that, you know, we continue to work on this agreement, given the contributions of the fields and to the schools in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Stewart?
I do not have a prepared statement, so I shall not go to the microphone. I've lived at twenty-one Rollins Way, San Carlos, for twenty-eight years, and I am more concerned about many of the other facets of the project, and have a very negative view of the project as a whole, and would encourage you not to continue its formulation. I can tell you that the ribbon was cut on Sequoia Hospital in September 1950. For the past fifty-six years, it's been an excellent medical center, rising to the top ten percent in the league.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next, we have Michelle Batschagloupe, followed by Robert Stafford, followed by Tim Kinn.
First, I want to thank you for asking such detailed questions of the prepared proposal. And we really appreciate you digging in and getting clarity on that. However, I'm extremely concerned. This project doesn't have broad, complete public support. I hear a lot of seductivity about monies and guarantees, and, you know, there's no guarantees in life, quite frankly. And I don't know that those of us who have the concerns are fully being addressed and listened to. The proposal came out right before a long holiday. I unfortunately haven't had the time to go into detail, as many have. I'm also not as good with numbers as some. But there's so many problems with this project that really can't be mitigated. Arguments have already been stated about the environment, about people, about local businesses, about gridlock that I already deal with every day, but we're moving forward. I am very glad you're moving slowly. You paid for report about other economic possibilities, and those don't seem to be being pushed forward in the way that PAMP is. Again, money is very seductive, and we certainly have a need for it. People state that they've been here for thirty years. Well, great, their parcel taxes are probably this much compared to those of us who have been here less than ten. We certainly need a way to generate money, but this isn't the way. I have notes to try and stay focused. Sorry about this. I do feel we need to get creative, we need to generate revenue. There are lots of other opportunities, and I don't feel that this is a responsible one. I also want to ask that more negotiations are in open-door sessions, public with PAMP, with council members, with staff, so that we can actually all be involved in these discussions on an ongoing basis. I think I covered everything. Thank you very much for listening. Let's continue to do due diligence and move solely on something that's going to have long-term and significantly negative consequences, and let's not reduce ourselves to sarcasm.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Robert Stafford, I live on Cherry Street. Ostensibly, we're here this evening to review some financial details of a term sheet. I think it's important to maybe back up a little bit. From my perspective, I look through the lens of four generations in San Carlos, five on the peninsula. And I think when you look at the history of this area, from the gold rush to high-tech, biotech, nanotech, perhaps alternative energy, what do all these things have in common? There's no guarantee with them. But people took an initiative, and they put forward effort, and we've had tremendous strides. And we've seen that on societal levels, whether it's racial integration, environmental issues, gender issues. Whether or not Palo Alto Medical, whether or not this is a good proposal, it's premature to evaluate that. But I think you have to look through the lens of a culture right now that likes to supersize everything. Supersize our homes, we supersize our meals, we supersize an eighteen-acre location. That's not coming back again. So one of the things that you look at is you keep hearing the word guarantees. Well, with anything significant, there's no guarantee. You've got to push to get a result. So we have a thirty-year guarantee, well, I'll have to excuse me, I have a lens that's a hundred and fifty years old in this area. So thirty years, hey, that's embryonic. The cloak of nonprofit is being taken off on year thirty-one. They gain the benefit of this initially, but the cloak can come off. Eh, doesn't sound clean. Good people, Palo Alto Medical, no one's going to argue against that. But the question is, do we want, on a philosophical level, something that large, that's probably going to preclude people like John Baer or other people that are similarly positioned to do mixed use? We need housing, we need BMRs, we need revenue. But the issue- But the issue is, who's coming in? A nonprofit. For how long? Thirty years? Oh. Five-hundred-pound gorillas sitting in your living room? What do they do? Whatever they want. So what's that going to do to that area? It's probably going to preclude creative developers like John Baer and others from looking at that as our last spot for housing. So I think when they talk about guarantees, I don't know, guarantees where? I don't know. I don't see a lot of things that are guaranteed. How do you limit their growth? Assuming that, you know, they're thirty years and they're still here. I think those are covenants that are going to have to run with the lands to preclude, what? From that building being torn down and housing put there because it's now for profit? I think these are open questions. I think another question is, is what is the creative source that we're harnessing here? I don't see it. This area is all about creativity. You look at the council member, you look at the staff, they've done a great job, very creative people. This is a supersized solution, which I understand why planning, you know, they're going to go forward with what they have to do. They're good people, but I think the issue is, I think we can be a little more creative with this site. Lastly, to compare San Carlos to Mountain View, this is not even close. We're San Carlos. Do we really need a building this large? Kaiser is expanding, Sequoia is expanding, Mills is expanding. All right. Our demographic, the age of Aquarius, more alternative medicine, so there's a need for more beds? That's an open question. So I think Palo Alto Medical, good group of people, no doubt this concept is going to work in some town. I think it's a broad-stroke question of what town it is.
Thank you. We have Tim King, followed by Fred Kohler, and by Randy Silver.
Thank you. My name's Tim King. I live on Melundy Drive, and my family and I have lived here for the past ten years. I wanted to say that I'm strongly in support of this proposal, and I think the Economic Development Agreement is fantastic. I think it was very generous for Palo Alto Medical Foundation to donate or to pledge what they have for the city of San Carlos and for the San Carlos schools. I'd like to speak briefly about some of the benefits that the proposal has for the children of San Carlos. There's a million dollars pledged for development of sports facilities, for the development, or not facilities, but for the development of sports in the city of San Carlos, and also another million dollars that they had pledged to the San Carlos Educational Foundation. As you may not know, the state of California doesn't fund physical education for kids that are in kindergarten through the fifth grade. It's just not funded by the state. And the way we fund that here in San Carlos is that the parents donate money at every one of the elementary schools in order to pay for physical education for the children. Right now, this proposal could take that burden off the parents and let the parents fund other worthwhile events, other worthwhile things for the community, for the children of San Carlos. So again, I support the proposal and hope that you can move things through a little more swiftly than we've seen so far, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's hold the applause, folks. Thank you. Fred Kohler?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. My name is Fred Kohler. I live on Mesa Verde Way in San Carlos. For many years, I worked on the East Side, and among my other activities in the community, I was on the Citizens Committee for the Revision of the East Side Plan. I had six sentences I was going to read. I think I'll make it shorter than that, because most of what I was going to say has already been said very eloquently by those in support of the Economic Development Agreement and in support of PAMP in general. One thing that's not been said, however, is that we are a country of property rights and a country of free enterprise. And PAMP already owns the property, and I think something has to be considered in terms of, what if this proposal does not go through? A likely alternative would be there would be no change in the foreseeable future. I don't think that's an alternative that's very favorable for this city. In the past, San Carlos has made two serious errors. First, by not annexing Redwood Shores, and secondly, by closing the high school. I'd ask us not to make another mistake.
Thank you. Randy Silver, followed by Ruth Nolan, followed by Janine Rozakis. Is Randy gone? All right.
My name is Ruth Nolan. I live on St. Francis Way. Mr. Mayor and City Council members and friends, I think that we have looked at this so much from a monetarily point of view, which is also very important, but we also have to think of what the impact will be on our community. And although we want to think of ourselves as state-of-the-art in many ways, in all ways, actually, we are a small community. We are a small town. We came here for this purpose. We like it that way. We're not a big industrial outfit here, and I don't think that we need to have this type of a facility here in San Carlos. We already have a state-of-the-art medical facility with Sequoia, and we have also Kaiser. These are both, facilities are going to be improved. And as one of the speakers has already said, we can't have facilities being on their own anymore. We have to share. And one facility will spend the money for one type of equipment, and this is already being done. And just one other small thing, there have been hospitals that have gone bankrupt, and it's been very recently. And they've had to close their doors, and they've had to consolidate with other hospitals in the area. So it's not a sure thing that this hospital will survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, I'm sorry, Janine Rozakis, followed by Linda Drew, followed by Robert Lynch.
I'm Janice Rozakis. I've lived in San Carlos for forty years now. My children have all grown up here and gone to school here. I just want to comment that PAMP has done an excellent job of getting into the city, kind of bribing the city with all these offers for the schoolchildren. They've been very active for the last several years, but I'd urge you not to accept all these carrots that they're holding out. Look to the main problem, which is what is going to be the best thing for our small town? And I don't think that this project would be best. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Drew, followed by Robert Lynch.
I'm Linda Drew, seven ninety-one Crestview. My husband and I have been citizens of San Carlos and residents for almost twenty years. We've raised our kids here, both successfully through the school system, thank you. And one of the things we've both been really, really involved with is the schools. We've spent many hours volunteering, doing things, and one thing that's been true for the whole time has been money to the schools, and it is desperately needed. And I think we all really ought to think about that during this development agreement. The other thing is the Parks and Rec. Huge. San Carlos is huge in sports, and this is another windfall for the city. Everybody's going to need medical care. I'm getting older, hate to say it, but I am. And easily accessible, state-of-the-art, great medical facility, providing money to the city would really be an asset for us, and I encourage all of you to please think about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Robert Lynch. And Robert Lynch is followed by April Carlson and Kathleen Lynch.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. We've heard a lot of impassioned pleas this evening from various individuals, and I know they all truly believe the position that they've advocated. But frankly, I think that we need some really clear thinking on this subject. This is probably one of the most important issues that the city is going to contemplate for many, many years to come, and it requires some very, very, very careful consideration. Certainly, there are personal points of view. There's many, many agendas that various people here that are speaking to this issue have, but I think that you, in the end, have to do the clear thinking. We all have our own points of view. But just for your consideration, I think that you need to consider the following points. Based on the city's own study, your own study, this particular proposal that's made by PAMP to the city, as good as it is, and we've heard many say that, it certainly would bring roughly twenty-four million dollars to the city over the period of about thirty, actually about thirty-four years, when you extend it out through nineteen, through twenty thirty-nine. But there are alternatives that will bring more money, and to choose this option will cost the city money in the end, and cost the taxpayers, that's me, and that's most of you out there, it's going to cost you money in the end, and you have to give that consideration. Because one of the things the city needs is revenue. We all recognize that, and we need it now. We don't need to be waiting for it. We need to go ahead and get something going that actually produces money for the city and start bringing that in. And another important fact, you don't need to have money that's promised to you but with strings. Now, our very good city manager mentioned to us a number of the advantages of the proposal, and certainly there are many. But there are many disadvantages that he neglected to mention, and I'm sure this is just because of the time constraint. But the fact that the PAMP CEO and others would essentially control the foundation for about the first twenty-five years is one string. There are many other strings that we have to think about in terms of what this proposal really means. How can we use the money? What's the money really going to be good for? Now, certainly, you have the ability to take that nine million dollars, take it and go invest it yourselves and do some other things with it, but do you really want to do that? I think that using private investment by others who are tax-paying businesses represents a much better alternative, one that you have options. You actually have a way of changing. If a business goes bankrupt, that doesn't mean that's the end of the game. There are other businesses who would like to have those locations. So which is good, that option is just as good as the so-called guarantee that the PAMP is providing for you. And all of these are available to you without the traffic congestion issue, which is a major, major, yes, two minutes, I understand, is up. But there are many, many other issues here, and I think that the bottom line here is we need to have a development that actually returns money to us. Otherwise, I think you're going to simply invite a taxpayer lawsuit. I really believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. And April Carlson's, followed by Kathleen Lynch.
Good evening. My name is April Carlson. I'm a resident of San Carlos at Mesa Verde Way, and I'm also president of the San Carlos Educational Foundation. I'm speaking tonight about the Palo Alto Medical Foundation's involvement with the community of San Carlos. For the past two years, the San Carlos Educational Foundation has partnered with PAMP and the San Carlos School District on a highly successful series of parent education nights. In order to create a customized parent education series that met the needs of our school communities, members of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation Education Department met with and surveyed the parents, the San Carlos School District Superintendent, and the principals for the seven schools. Last year, there were six wonderful parent ed nights with topics ranging from strengthening healthy families to nutrition to friendships in general. Each session had approximately one hundred and twenty attendees, which is an incredible showing of support and recognition of the value and quality of the evenings by parents in our communities. We are partnering with PAMP again this year on our parent education series, and so far, the two evenings that have been held have been informative and appreciated by the attendees. The Palo Alto Medical Foundation continues to be a strong supporter of the public schools in San Carlos, both in its financial commitment and commitment of its invaluable medical resources. The San Carlos Educational Foundation appreciates the generous support of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Lynch, followed by Gail Hose, followed by Susan McKee.
I'm Kathleen Lynch of Clifton Avenue, over twenty-two years as a resident. The city claims that the economic issues have been settled. By whom? Not by the citizens. Again, we ask for a citizen advisory board to help decide what we, the citizens, want. Everyone keeps calling this a facility. It is a hospital. PAMP has never had a full, large, working hospital like this. It is not the little project, the little facility that's down in Palo Alto. This is gigantic compared to that, and we are a much smaller town than Palo Alto. As shown in the study for the city, an auto center would generate thirty-four point nine million dollars over thirty-four years, or eighty-two million dollars over fifty years, and we could use the money any way we want. So far, PAMP will act as the controlling advisors for this endowment, and I'm sorry, I don't call it an endowment, I call it a bribe. Everyone has talked tonight about how PAMP has come into our town and has been doing all of these wonderful evening nights. Of course they have. They want something. They want in our town, a little tiny town. They want a huge, monster facility. We, the citizens, if we had another business, we, the citizens, could designate what services we wanted and what our taxes, the taxes generated from that, what they could be used for, rather than PAMP telling us where we're going to be using the money. PAMP will be a tax deficit for the citizens of San Carlos for over thirty years. Mayor David said, "We're not here to discuss the traffic, but traffic is going to adversely affect this city financially horribly." The studies show we will have one grade above gridlock. Everyone talks about new businesses or the businesses in San Carlos getting business from PAMP. You will not be able to get into San Carlos, folks. If you remember, if you lived here, the horrific traffic from Oracle when it expanded, you will be putting us in a worse position than that, and there are no plans and no money set aside to correct or change this. As earlier said, the Mountain View project took a lot less time because it was much smaller. Hossina Gardens took over a year and a half in planning, if Chris can correct me, and he had an idea for a much larger building. We worked very hard for a very long time to get a compromise that was fair to him and fair to the city and fair to the citizens. Because you are pushing this project through and have not formed any citizen advisory boards, and because you're not giving anywhere near the time and effort to any other projects, you're inviting litigation because of the adverse impact PAMP will have on the taxpayers for years to come.
Thank you. Gail Hose, followed by Susan McKee. Gail is not with us? Susan McKee?
I'm Susan.
Oh, thank you very much. Susan McKee?
I'm Susan.
You're Susan McKee. Gail's not here. Susan's not speaking. We're next to Kevin Clay, followed by Ron Collins, and Ron is our last speaker, unless others wish to participate. Of course.
Good evening. Kevin Clay, I live up on Lindhurst in San Carlos. I've only been a member of the city of San Carlos for a member, citizen, for about fifteen years, so I'm honored to be a part of this process. This is really awesome to see this happen, and I thank you, Honorable Mayor and then council members, for taking the time to do this. I was born at Sequoia Hospital. My wife was born at Sequoia Hospital, so I know it's about forty-nine years old. All three of my children were born at Sequoia Hospital, and it's a great facility. This is not about big brother, big sister, who's going to operate. This is about the development agreement. They, PAMP, want to come build a three-hundred-million-dollar medical facility. Excellent. They want to give the city nine million in endowment funds. Now, there are some issues with that, and I think you could kind of hone down the agreement a little bit more. About the nine million, I would love to see it carved out with a supermajority, that any future councils were unable to spend that in the absence of a supermajority. But they're going to come build a three-hundred-million-dollar facility. They're going to give you nine million dollars, you, the city of San Carlos, they're going to give us nine million dollars, guarantee and income. They're going to give the Ed Foundation a million and a half, which will throw off fifty to... $50,000 to $100,000 in a good investment cycle, to probably pay for a teacher or a small facility upgrade into perpetuity, as long as that money's not touched. They're going to give the Fields a million dollars, and they're also going to give Parks and Rec money too. At this point, maybe I'm just a capitalist at large, but I would instruct city manager Mark Wise to find a small conference room, sit down with PAMP, bring Starbucks every hour on the hour, and have a development agreement for us in the morning to sign. I know it's been a tough process, it's been arduous, it doesn't have to be, it's all there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael Galvin, city treasurer, followed by Horst Young.
I'm Michael Galvin, city treasurer. As city council, city treasurer is elected to represent the residents of San Carlos. For whatever reason, I have not been involved in this important financial interest. I do have some comments, I've received a copy of the agenda and entitled confidential for purpose negotiations only, I hope I do not disclose anything that should not be disclosed. But in reviewing this document, there's been several discussions about $9 million. In reality, if you look at that, only $5 million required the first year, that equates to about 12.5% targeted return with 2.5% inflation for each subsequent year. The additional $4 million is not due until 36 months subsequent, so that should be looked into. I also have a concern about the control of the endowment, if in fact it exists. As it's worded, there's one city representative and two PAMP representatives, I think there ought to be something more equal. There's also no definition of what general public health and safety is. As I read this document, the money is to be used for general public health and safety of San Carlos, so that definitely needs to be resolved. And then, there's also a concern that subsequent, one person is responsible for determining where this money would be spent, and I think a couple of parties have discussed that before. But I think we really got to look into the financial aspects. I'm not for or against a project, but I am concerned about what impact it will have on the city, and we got to look at the financial impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Horst Young, followed by Ron Collins.
Hi, I'm Horst Young, I live in Coronado. I didn't intend to say anything, but, and I must admit, I'm in principle for the project, but I think both parties should think about one thing, what are the options? The options, regardless who you bring, a big box store, an auto mall, any other big business for this large site brings traffic, so the traffic is, you're going to have traffic one way or the other. Tax-wise, you may have tax, you may not have tax. Unbalanced, I think it's beneficial to the city. Furthermore, I think it brings something to the city that we don't have so far. Perhaps it could even help us to attract, we talk about attracting other businesses, biotech, such things. It's kind of a fit with what's next to it, what's down next on the other one. It would, I think, in principle, I'm sorry, unbalanced, it's a benefit to the city. Furthermore, we have additional employees coming in, hopefully high-paid medical people, high-income specialists, doctors, that will eat in our town, that will buy homes in our town, and so, and first of all, I think it's just a good thing for the city, and you can, and of course, people argue about traffic congestion, very true, but the options are no better. Would you like to have an auto mall down there with Ford car dealers that every other year go out of business? Would you like to have a Walmart down here? No, I mean, so, let's face it, it's a good option. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ron Collins.
I'm Ron Collins, I live at 1662 Chestnut, I'm a 40-year resident of San Carlos, and before I begin my comments, I want to thank the city council for giving me an opportunity to speak. Now, I want to congratulate every person that has spoken tonight, I'm proud to be a member of this city, it doesn't matter to me if you spoke for or against, you care about our town, and you're here, and I'm impressed by it. Tonight, you've heard many opinions expressed about the proposed San Carlos Medical Center. I'm confident that when this public process is completed, the project will be decided on its merits based on what is in the best interests of our community. Some have questioned the economics of the development agreement now on the table. In response, I would ask, what other project coming to this town would be able to make the kind of financial commitments that PAMP has offered? The terms of the proposal agreement more than cover not only the city's cost to serve the medical center, but a significant sum to support general city services on an annual basis, along with a generous offer directed to Parks and Recreation Needs as well as our educational foundation. When the entire proposal is considered, the financial and other community benefits that will come to our city are considerable and greater than that would be realized by other uses suggested for this 18-acre site. Now, there are those that say that the medical center project would bring major traffic problems. In response, I would ask, what other project would bring less traffic and sufficient revenue to the city? A big box, a large office park, any projects like these would bring as much traffic, if not more, and especially during the evening commute hour. We must ask ourselves, what do we want for this community? PAMP will pay its fair share of any traffic mitigations required, over and above the financial contribution proposed by the development agreement. Finally, there are those who have said that we don't need another hospital here. Let's be clear, we are not, we are talking about a medical center with an inpatient component, not a major hospital. Several recently published studies in the media have stated the obvious, our population is aging, and we will need more medical services in the future. Those who fear the impact on Sequoia, and to those people who fear the impact of Sequoia Hospital, I say, both my children who are born there, my only wife was born there, sorry, I don't read my own handwriting very well, nerves too. It's a first-class medical facility. If I need medical care, hospital care, I will go there too.
Two minutes, Ron.
I'm almost done. We will not stop using it, and Sequoia cannot be classified as a medical center with all the outpatient services in one location. These facilities can coexist, as there will be room for both in 2012, when hopefully the San Carlos Center will open, along with Sequoia's new hospital now in the planning stages. PAMP has stepped up to the plate, I think it's time now for San Carlos to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes my speaker slips. Does anyone else who would like to weigh in before we move on? Mr. Carpe, you're next, up, on the next part of the agenda. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Pat Bell?
Sorry, I'll fill out a speaker slip afterwards. I just have one suggestion, with if PAMP could come up with one more million, we could buy two fire trucks and an ambulance, and that would ease the pressure on another agenda item. I mean, 25, the difference between 25 million and 26 million in their world isn't much, the difference between no fire trucks and two new fire trucks is tremendous to us. Thank you.
Okay, Pat, thank you. That concludes the public input portion of our item. Thank you all very much for your comments, we appreciate that, and we'll now chat amongst ourselves and see where we go from here. Anyone like to start?
I guess I'll start. I'm not going to wordsmith this to death because I know that the attorneys have lots of time to do that. I'd rather actually talk about sort of some of my larger concerns and see if there's consensus amongst my council members to provide enough direction to staff and to council in order to implement or to make some changes. My first and primary concern actually has to do with the term of the document, or the term of the agreement, and in my mind, the 30 years ought to be a minimum, not necessarily the maximum. And the reason is because this is, you know, PAMP has consistently said that they are committed to the community, and if that's the case, then, as we know, they're going to be unfortunately providing some level of impact financially to the community for the entire time that they're here. Hospitals are not like retail or other businesses that change ownership or go out of business and move to either look for cheaper labor, they become an integral part of the community. So having said that, I would like to look to see if the term, if there'd be support to have the minimum of the term 30 years with either a renewal clause or the term to be for the life of the project. The second major concern I have is actually with the control of the $9 million endowment amount. At a minimum, I'd like to see the city treasurer added to the list of one of the four advisors of the endowment with a tiebreaker to go to the, if there needs to be a tiebreaker, to go to the city council for decision, because ultimately, this is an impact to the city, and I think that we need, either this council or future councils need to maintain some level of control over how that money is spent. And then, the other issue, I think, is that I would like to see the language in, I guess it's section A4, for the term of the endowment, that the actual investment returns shall remain at $9 million in the endowment, not for the first five years, and that we look at striking seven altogether, which is, if indeed it does make more money than we expected, the city, I think, may have unexpected costs, and that the, actually, that the money just continues to sit there and grow for the benefit of the city. Those are sort of my biggest concerns. I guess I want to also mention that, just for the people who did come and speak tonight, I really appreciated hearing from all of you, and I think that, from my standpoint, I'm not either opposed to or supportive of this project at this point, just because this is, we're still gathering information, we still have a lot of information and a ground that needs to be covered. So this is just part of the development agreement that's going to go into the overall package and the overall consideration in the next coming months. So please don't take any comments that I've made about specifics or how I'd like to make this development, or I see this development agreement changed as either being in support of or opposed to the project, it's actually neither. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to my fellow council members to comment.
Okay. Through the chair, I apologize. You know, I just realized, I have two pages here, front and the back, do you have more?
Yeah, I do. I have, so you're missing page three of the grammar?
I wonder, because you gave a saying about, and Mr. Galvin mentioned too, about, and I'm thinking, where did I miss this?
Yeah, you should have three pages, Councilmember Griselli.
I don't.
There's really not that much that's said on the third page.
I'll go first on the first two.
Read, Bob.
Okay. Apologize to that interruption, I should have noticed that a lot sooner than this.
It basically deals with the use tax guarantees, the one-time payment of the $722,000 and the $152,000 per year with the escalator.
McKee, we have that square away? Bob, would you like to say something regarding the process?
No, I would like to say that I think the process is, I know it's taken a long time, and, but this is the largest parcel in the city, as I understand it. It's certainly, I've been here for 23 years, I don't think anything's been built that's bigger than this, and this is going to impact our city for many, many, many years. I think slow and steady is a good way. I appreciate that tonight we have this development agreement, because there is a fine line of dragging feet on projects, and I think we're stepping up to the plate to cross over that, to make it moving ahead, and as Mayor David said, hopefully by the spring, we will have a lot of these meetings through. Having looked at the proposal, I think that staff has worked very, very hard to try to replicate, if I could use that word, a possible for-profit situation. A for-profit situation is never guaranteed, tomorrow it can go out of business. Having said that, as Sequoia has been around for 50 some-odd years, and Kaiser has been around for 50 some-odd years, and many other hospitals have been around for many years, those are community hospitals, and they were built in a different time, in a different century. This century has a different look at healthcare, and I think we have to realize that this project is got to be looked at from all directions. And as Councilwoman Tiggle Doherty said, I'm not ready to say I'm for or against it either, because there are tons, and really, there are many more pages, not just the one I'm missing, of information that I need to see. I would encourage staff to continue to work with PAMP on this. I think they've done a great job, and as I said, trying to replicate a private industry situation, put in many long hours, and, you know, to nitpick on, in my opinion, or to wordsmith, as Councilwoman Tiggle Doherty said, we could be here for hours on exactly how much or whatever. I think we just need to move forward with the process for PAMP to feel like they're not being delayed, and I appreciate all the input that I've had, I took notes on every single speaker tonight that spoke, and I'm trying to, again, assimilate all this information so that I can make an informed decision when it is brought back to us in a more formal way.
Thank you. Councilmember Roko?
Yes, sir. I wanted to, I don't think he's here anymore, I think he left, but there was a gentleman who talked about, and one of the ladies who spoke also, about having a citizens advisory committee, and during my time as mayor, I received a letter from Mr. Saul Cutler asking for that, and I just wanted to say, I was rather taken aback, because we do put together citizens advisory committees for many things, to help us look at policy issues and so forth. That would be rather unusual, I think, even what we're doing tonight, bringing a negotiation item forward publicly, it says right on here, it's confidential stuff, which is typically how negotiations are done, whether they are employee-related, or when you're dealing with property things in the city, we do all those negotiations behind closed doors for a reason. In this case, I don't know, when a fellow asked if we could put together a citizens advisory committee because he wanted more citizen input and so forth on this negotiation or development agreement, I thought that was rather odd, because that's why you have a city council. That's what we do, we deal with land use issues, we deal with these kinds of things, and we represent the people, and if you want to call us or talk to us or send us an email or, as you did tonight, come before us and speak, that's part of the process, but to ask us to give away the negotiation process to some type of citizens advisory committee, in my opinion, is not appropriate. As far as this document goes, the only comments I wanted to add really were to echo Mr. Galvin, our city treasurer's comments, I do think looking at the terms of when the money comes forward needs to be looked at, I think his comment about having some kind of more equal representation for this board that would oversee the endowment is advisable, although I would point out, it does say that this board would act as advisors, it's not like they make final decisions on things, I suppose a lot of those decisions would then come to the council. I suppose a lot of those decisions would then come to the council. So those are the things that I saw here that I would take a look at, and advise staff to take a look at. And please do work with our city treasurer on some of these ideas as well, if you would. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Member Lewis.
I guess, just so everybody understands, this is also the first time that the council's gotten a look at what the terms of the negotiation that's taken place so far are. And I think we are taking sort of a very measured pace as this thing sort of works its way through the process. And given the scope of it, I think it's appropriate, just to sort of echo Councilmember Grisilli's comments on that. I think some good points have been brought up tonight. I do think the term of the deal, what happens at the completion of the term of the deal, are things that we've asked questions about and I think we should talk about. It seems like a lifespan for a hospital where, you know, we know in the Bay Area here, 50 years is not unheard of. So we should make plans for that eventuality, so we know what we do in that case. As far as the components of governing the foundation, I think we all could use a little more information on that. I think City Treasurer Galvin brings up some good points on that. I'm not sure I have enough information yet on really, how does that governance work? What's the input components from the city side and from PAMF's side, to really formulate an opinion on that yet? So I'd like to know, as you get deeper into the negotiation, what are those components? And what are some of our remedies? I'm interested by the comment about perhaps a supermajority needing to exist on council to pull the $9 million out. I don't know what the legal ramifications are of something like that, Mr. Landzone, but it certainly would be a gigantic decision if council ever made something like that, with major reparations to future budgets and so forth. So, anyway, it's worth a discussion and legal review of that. I think that one of the ongoing difficult items for council in general is, it's the crystal ball thing, as we look into the future. And what does a project like this mean? What does the mythical other project to this 18 acres, what does that mean? What's the quality-of-life impact on San Carlos? These are things we're all left to sort of contemplate and analyze in the existing documentation for this land use. And that's frankly where some of the difficulty comes in, where you just sort of look at this and look at this in a measured way. Which is our charge to continue to do, get as much information as we can, so we try to make a decision in the best interest of the city. So I guess those are, a couple of the components. I agree with the initial comments of Councilmember Teagle Doherty about trying to take a look at some of these components in the deal, and getting more information on that, pressing forward on that. I do think the compounded investment return, I think the way that it's prioritized in the deal, as I read it right now, that the compounded interest that we would receive in good years would go first, in first priority, to pay back. The more difficult years, if we didn't achieve that investment amount. I would like to see us press on that a little bit. I think it would be to our benefit if it was described, as Councilmember Grisilli describes the scenario, where that would continue to build. And maybe there's a threshold on that. It reaches a certain thing, then we go back to paying out of that or something. But, I think we should continue to look at that, whether or not it should always just stay at that $9 million and be paid out first. I think that's something that we should analyze and see if there's any room there. So those are my comments for now. Thank you very much. And staff, again, I think that economically, to bring this into a situation where there's some economic benefit to the city, you guys have worked hard at this, and I congratulate you on hard work, trying to move this deal in a way that you can, you know, make it economically viable. It's valuable property, and it's dear to the city of San Carlos.
Okay, thank you. We've heard from the councilmembers. I would like to add, for the record, a letter that was received from George W. Williams. GW Williams Company operates a 13-acre industrial park, or business park on Taylor Way, nearby the proposed site. They report that they have examined the record, and that they are in favor of the project, feeling it is superior to any other alternative uses for the site. So they'll forward that to the file. The comments that have been made pretty much reflect where I am, I won't repeat them. I would just simply remind the audience and the guests at home that this is part of the process, this doesn't approve anything, we're simply giving input to staff. Those who feel that this project has been decided, it's in the bag, and it's a done deal, you're wrong. I think all of us are independently minded, we're all looking at the whole package. And when it comes to our review in the spring, hopefully we'll have all the components together so that we can look at it carefully and make a determined decision. So, we've passed along comments to staff. We're not approving or voting on anything at this point. You have enough, and we're set to go?
We've got good information, and we appreciate your commentary, and we'll get our heads together and report back as appropriate.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
For the chair, do you need a motion to extend the meeting past 10?
Well, we're only at 10. We go to 10:30.
Oh, it's 10:30, okay, I'm sorry.
So we move along to item eight, which is public comment. I have several speaker cards. Please be reminded that items for public comment reflect items not on the posted agenda, and we ask you to limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Andre Carpié, would you come forward, please? It's good to see you again.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from Emoryville, and I'm an alien here in San Carlo. I'm surprised to see so many people debating a new building and all that, and it's lively, it's unexpected for me. I didn't think that, coming from so far, I may probably miss my train to go back, I was going to find such a not competitive attitude about the new project. But I have done many projects in my life, professor, inventor, engineer, and what I could say, and I'm old enough to say it, each time you have a project, it's like sex. Many more no than yes. And this is about what it amounts to.
There was one between him and John. You are too beautiful, I fear to be true. I am a fool for you.
Hi, I'm Sergeant John Reed with the San Carlos Police Department. California state law requires that anybody under the age of eight-
Has been seen like Elvis sighting, you know, down Southern California, driven. And when I confronted the police, the police says, "We sorry, mister, but we not in business of recovering stolen property. If we stumble on it, and if we found the man, then we'll question and, but as far as your solar car, you know, you have to look for yourself." So I have good news. I finally came up to, not two minutes yet, I finally come up to Supina Yahoo, and I'm going to get the address where I'll be able to serve the suspect. I hope so. That's over two years, two and a half years. My first car was stolen in 19, in 2002. I found it in 2004. And when I found it here in San Carlo, the police prevented me from getting it. It was a baiting and aiding and abetting in the commission of a felony grand auto car theft. So I don't know how to say it, you know, but I don't want to say the police is corrupt, but something wrong with it. Thank you.
Very good.
I'll come back again, I'll come half a dozen times here.
Okay, thank you for coming and speaking to us again. Barbara Patterson. Barbara Patterson. Public comment? Yeah, wait, I'm sorry. Pat Bell, public comment?
Welcome to this newly organized council. I just wanted to say that I'm happy with what I'm hearing from the council tonight. I'm very glad to hear that we're going to move forward with former Mayor Teagle Doherty's enhancing the city of good living. I think a lot of good has come out of that already, and I'm very glad that Mayor Davis is going to put his energy behind keeping it going. I was also glad to hear Vice Mayor Lewis talk about development not just for downtown. I think it's important that we not segregate our city into Laurel Street over here, and industrial use over here. I think we need to have some retail on the east, I guess I'm pointing in the wrong direction, some on the east side and some over here, not to take away from Laurel Street, but to have more of a blend all over the city. I look forward to working with you over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Bartle.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Burrell. I live at 352 Deansa Avenue in San Carlos, and I'm a senior at Bellarmine High School in San Jose. As part of my senior service project this year, I've been working with Barbara Patterson and the Friends of Cordillares Creek at Redwood City High School. Every Saturday, with the help of other Bellarmine students, we work to restore the portion of the creek that runs along the school by removing invasive plants and trees, and by planting native species in their place. Although we have removed several non-native acacia trees, and tree-of-heaven trees, scores of large eucalyptus trees still loom over the creek, wrecking the natural habitat and threatening precious biodiversity. Restoration of the creek is not only ecologically beneficial, but it also helps reduce erosion and prevent flooding. I've been most impressed with Barbara's willingness to share her knowledge of the creek with others. About a month ago, the Friends of Cordillares Creek sponsored a creek awareness event at a house on Lamb Shin Lane in San Carlos. Their residents discuss native plant alternatives and natural ways to control erosion. The Friends of Cordillares Creek have educated countless citizens and students, helping them to recognize that the creek is not a drainage ditch, but a dynamic and fertile source of life. But the effects of educating residents and students about our waterways permeate beyond the local context of San Carlos. It encourages individuals to adopt environmentally conscious mindsets that enable them to become responsible stewards of the planet. I therefore wholeheartedly urge the city council to support the Friends of Cordillares Creek and their endeavors as much as possible. It is the product of grassroots organizations like the Friends of Cordillares Creek that truly brings about progressive change. There are four creeks in San Carlos with hundreds of people living along them. These creeks need to be protected by the city council and our community. Thank you.
Okay, Christopher.
Thank you, I'm Barbara Patterson, I live in San Carlos. And I wanted to thank Chris, I didn't really pay him to say that. However, I do sign off on his community service hours.
You gotta feel undeniable.
His father, Jeff Burrell, is here also. And he's been involved with our creek activities for a few years, supporting the Friends and other groups. I have just three things to say tonight. The first, of course, I'm inspired by Chris, he's brought four to six to eight other students along with him, and we work out there, we get our boots on, go in the creek and clear debris, and we've done some trimming to prepare, do winter preparation, so that there won't be blockages along the creek. So we do clear the path. So it helps everybody downstream, and it's just a good thing. I wanted to announce that there's going to be a workshop on natural methods of preserving creek banks and preventing erosion. And this is going to be presented by the watershed outreach specialist for the state water board, her name is Anne Riley. And she actually wrote this book, which is a primer on stream and river protection for the regulator and program manager. It's really very cool primer. We've gotten about 40 of these through a grant that we obtained, so we're going to make these available. The workshop will be primarily for city engineers and engineering staff, but they're also opening up to planners in the city, and to city council members, who would want to learn more about the creeks and deepen your knowledge. We bring in kind of a broader spectrum than what you've been talking about tonight. You know, we've got to build things, but we also have to keep things natural. The second, yeah, 2A, I was wondering if there's any follow-up on my presentation last time of that pink plastic mesh material that I showed to all of you?
Okay. I can report back on that, that it is an approved material from Department of Fish and Game. Department of Fish and Game does apparently control this process in the creeks. So beyond that, I don't have information for you.
I think that the main protector of the creek is the cities.
Right.
The cities, the state doesn't have time to go through all these little creeks and projects.
There's limits.
So we have to be the ones that really set the bar a little higher.
But we can't, Barbara, we can't go in and just plow things out and do things on our own. It's all highly structured, as you know.
Well, they come up, they do, you know, an agreement, but the proposal comes from the resident of the city. The final item is, I wanted to congratulate you for becoming mayor.
Thank you.
And thank, and highlight your protection of the environment, and also let people know about the weeklywalker.com, which is a very cool website, because you've explored over 100 sites.
The two minutes are way, way over now.
And then I want to thank Matt Grocott, everybody else has been going over. I want to thank Matt Grocott, thanks for your vision, your diligence, your determination, and for supporting us all year. Thank you.
All right. And thank you. Thank you for your hard work and your perseverance. We're moving right ahead to item nine, approval of consent calendar. These items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Staff, any removals?
No.
Council? Public? All right, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve consent calendar items 9A through E.
Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. We're moving right into item 10A, but before I do that, I've had a request from Vice Mayor Lewis that we, after 10B-
From me.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me. Councilmember Teagle Doherty, thank you. That we move 12A after 10B, so that we can stay on our timeline for 10:30 if possible. Okay? Any problem with that? It's ordered. Then we move ahead, Brian, to item 10A.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Item 10A is a report on the results of the balloting for the proposed fire assessment. As you know, from the information that we posted on the city website last week, the measure did not pass. It needed a majority vote on a weighted vote, and the results were, yes, 47 percent, no, 53 percent. We also, at the staff level, did do an analysis of the votes by category, and you have that attached to your report. And again, that's also available on the website, and that's been mailed out as well. Tonight, we come before you to receive the report of the ballot results, and to pass the attached resolution adopting those results.
All right, any questions before we move to the resolution? And then is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I would move approval of resolution number?
200680.
200680, declaring the results of the property under protest proceeding for the proposed fire suppression assessment district.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. So now we move into item 10B, which is consideration for service provision options. And Mark will give us a review of that.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, in consideration of the last item, we thought it appropriate to put a report on the agenda that would speak to what do we do now, what are the next steps? And from the staff perspective, we wanted to alert the council to the fact that- And from the staff perspective, we wanted to alert the council to the fact that there is a decision point that could be made by the city council prior to the end of December. The way that the JPA was negotiated included a proviso by which if the measure did not pass in either city, that either city could opt out of the JPA by the end of this calendar year, by the end of December, and that would trigger the proviso by which the JPA would be disbanded within a six-month period by the end of June or the next fiscal year, June of two thousand seven. We bring that information to you because it is a decision point that you might want to contemplate, but I want to point out, as we did in the staff report, staff is not recommending that we take any action. From the staff perspective, we've made great progress in the last year in terms of negotiating a new joint powers agreement, in terms of reconstituting the fire department, in terms of selecting a chief and reestablishing morale, negotiating labor agreements. There's been considerable progress made in terms of reestablishing the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. And in acknowledging that, we would encourage that direction to give into staff and to the representatives to the fire board, that every effort be made to continue working with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department as equal partners with the Belmont Fire Protection District in working towards resolving the financial issues that are before the department at this time. The current level of operations are funded within this fiscal year. The, you know, there will be some challenges as individual issues come up because there are not adequate reserves to handle crises or individual incidents that maybe have not been anticipated within the budget. And the kinds of things that we were attempting to address with the measure, I think, are things that are still important and we should still work towards in terms of establishing a reserve fund and trying to be able to set the department up in a manner that it can handle some incidents that might not be fully planned or anticipated. We do believe that working forward as equal partners, if you recall, we go back to the fifty-fifty formula in terms of how the costs are distributed, and we'll begin working immediately with representatives from the fire department as well as the district in furthering plans by which we might maintain a balanced budget. We've included information within the package, just as a reminder, as efforts have been made in the past to solicit alternative provisions for fire services. Just in the effort of sound governmental practice, we are reestablishing some of those contacts, just in case either city should determine that they would like to implement the action that would cause us to disband on a more prompt or in a more prompt fashion. But save that, it's our recommendation at this time that authorization be granted, that we continue to work with the Belmont Fire District as equal partners in moving the fire department forward into the new year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark?
I just had one question. Have you spoken with the city manager of Belmont? Have you gotten any insight about what direction Belmont may take in this?
I reviewed the staff report that is being prepared for their council meeting tomorrow evening. I've talked with the finance director in Belmont today. The sense I get is that they're grappling with the issue much as we are, and much in the same way as I wouldn't try to represent to them what our council reaction to this report might be. I wouldn't expect that they would give me that representation either until after their meeting tomorrow night.
But you don't have any indication of whether or not they're thinking of withdrawing or actively pursuing other alternatives?
I have no firm indication one way or the other. The sense I get is that they would like to work as well. Now, whether or not, in terms of keeping the district, I think both of us recognize the progress that's been made in the past year. Whether or not that speaks to moving forward as equal partners or not, or I simply don't know, and I don't think we will know until they meet, consider the matter formally as well.
Through the chair, if I may. I would just, to help Ms. Doherty with her answer, or help Mark give an answer. There was a comment in the paper, one of the journals that quoted Corlin Fireback is saying that her inclination anyways would be to keep going forward, but that's just one person. That's all we know.
Okay.
Any others?
I have a question in the report. It says in here that district revenues have grown in recent years to accommodate the existing budget levels, and that these revenues may exceed the district's direct annual costs towards the department. Could you explain that for me a little bit?
It's understanding that the district, the Belmont Fire Protection District, that their tax, and we're not experts in this, mind you, it's just been reported to us as we were negotiating the past agreement, that their revenues have grown more rapidly than the city of San Carlos' revenues. And the reason for that is that it's our understanding that their revenues are based upon property taxes, which have shown some increase, whereas our revenues include property taxes, but also other categories such as transient occupancy taxes and sales taxes, which may not have grown as high as or as rapidly as property taxes have. So it's our understanding that their projections for property tax revenues for the Fire Protection District have grown more rapidly, and that may be difficult for this city to maintain in terms of matching, if it's our goal to match. But we're not trying to represent and, or project or predict. We're simply reporting to you what's been reported to us or represented to us during the past year, and certainly have no insight into the city of Belmont or the Belmont Fire Protection District's ability to pay for fire service or what other demands or challenges might be apparent in that district.
Thank you. Yep, I guess I'm most interested to also listen to Councilmembers Grisilli and Grocott, your opinion where things are. I'm certain you guys have had discussions that surround the failure or not of the assessment and going forward and so forth, so I'm curious to get their points of view as well.
The gentleman want to go first, or should we ask the chief to come up?
I did ask the chief to come tonight, and he's prepared to make some comments, perhaps we want to hear from him.
Brian, would you like to give us a state of affairs?
Good evening. Currently, we have scheduled a special board meeting for Wednesday night, which will be after, certainly after tonight's meeting and after the Belmont Fire Protection District meeting tomorrow night, and we do have some ideas that we want to share with the fire board, and we're requesting just to allow us some time to do that and go through the process and see what things are available for us to deal with, and how we can go down that road and look at revenue, fund revenue, some balances, how we can change the way we do business, and what we may be able to do to make the department a little more efficient, and look at other ways of doing our daily operation.
Thank you. Well, that sounds like your agenda for Wednesday night. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, that's true.
The only thing I would add, because obviously Councilmember Grocott and I have been living with this for a year, as the chief has and as all the members of the department have, in my opinion, sitting here on November twenty-seventh this year, it's like night and day compared to November twenty-seventh last year. I think we've built a rapport. I think Councilmember Grocott would agree with the city of Belmont. That doesn't mean they're going to agree with us all the time, and we're going to agree with them all the time, but I think we've built a good rapport with them, and relative to that, I think that for what we have to do this evening, I think would be the option or alternative one, to go on as equal partners and sustain the services as we have them. Our budget is balanced for this year through June thirtieth, two thousand and seven. We have a labor contract which, in a way, almost balance, shows us what our cost is going to be for next year also, so I don't think there's any rush to judgment that we need to do anything quickly until after, as Chief Fry said. Tomorrow night Belmont Fire District meets, we meet on Wednesday, and then also we have another regularly scheduled meeting on December thirteenth. So I think, personally, I just think we're way, way ahead of where we were last year, and I think we're in a much, much better position, and I feel extremely confident that we can gain a lot of progress in what we're going to be doing.
All right. Thank you. We do have two requests to speak. Gary Foth, followed by Pat Bell. Gary represents the Belmont-San Carlos firefighters.
Good evening, Mayor Davis and San Carlos council members. My name is Gary Foth, and I'm here tonight representing the new and improved Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department members. And I'm here to ask you tonight to approve the recommendations actually made by the city manager, Mark Weiss, that we continue with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. As you know, your fire board members have put in a lot of work over the last year, and we've all worked together, and really, really, as everyone has said, have made some major accomplishments. And with that, we think we're going to be able to move forward with the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. A couple of things, as people have already mentioned most of this, but, you know, the morale has improved greatly just over the last few months. We do have a labor contract, a five-year agreement, which calls for no pay raises for the firefighters for the first two years, modest pay raises for the following three years, and a two-tiered retirement system, which will actually reduce retirement benefits for future employees in the future. And, you know, I just want to give credit to the members of the department and their willingness to work together to make those types of agreements, because they're very, very difficult. And so I think what we've shown is the ability for the fire department and the labor unit and the management unit and the fire board members and the city councils, that we can do this if we just stick to it, and we're hoping that everyone is just going to say we're going to keep moving ahead and no one's going to try and bail out or move sideways. And just a special thanks from the members to both Matt and Bob for all the just enormous amount of time that they've put in over the last year. And like he said, that we're here today is almost a miracle. And I'd also like to thank the council for supporting them and giving them the latitude to really do what needed to be done. So we just ask for your support, and thank you.
Thank you. Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I also strongly support Mr. Weiss's recommendation. Please take note of that. Sometimes he thinks I don't support him at all, but I do. And I'm just here to say what everyone else has said. As Mr. Grisilli said, things are so different now. I've watched that sea change take place. I was at that first two-by-two meeting in January of this year, and the subsequent two-by-two meetings that were very, very tense, and it was very tough to get to the figures that finally got scratched up on that whiteboard and became the agreement. And so many people have put so much work into this, and so much has been accomplished, that I just, I strongly urge you to continue to support our fire board members and our city staff to work with Belmont to move forward. I think the firefighters have given a lot in time and no raises and two-tiered retirement. They have really pitched in, and all the people who have worked so hard on this have done a fabulous job, and we need to support them and move on and solve this problem however we're going to solve it. Don't give up now. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Grocott has another comment.
Yes, sir. I almost hesitate to bring this up, but I think to somewhat address the concerns that Councilmember Doherty raised, which I think are legitimate, we of course have our meeting tonight, Belmont has their meeting tomorrow night. They could take a totally different tact than we're taking. And given that could be the case, I think we should go with recommendation number one, but at the same time monitor what happens tomorrow night, and we may need to call a special meeting of this council to react to something I hope doesn't happen tomorrow night, but may, and if it does, I think we need to be ready for that.
Okay. Well said. Anything else?
Just to pursue a clarification, just so I'm clear. If prior to the end of the calendar year, we don't initiate a termination of the agreement, then it's an eighteen-month term if we decided to terminate the agreement at that point?
That's correct.
So we still have another council meeting before the end of the year, also if Belmont does something? This could come back on the agenda if they change this. And then in that, starting also the first of the calendar year, that's at an equal sharing of the expenses. Is that right?
We've reverted back to an equal share, yes.
And it's a, okay. Great. And I just want to say, I do appreciate all the efforts the firefighters put in, dramatic amount of effort into this whole thing, and I think in addressing, it's difficult for any sort of labor contract for people to address things like retirement and so forth. I know there's probably a lot of those difficult things to address and put forward, some of those concessions, so certainly appreciate those efforts.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the San Carlos representatives on the fire board and staff to work with the Belmont Fire District representatives as equal partners in an effort to sustain the fire protection services as provided by the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Protection Department.
Is there a second? We have a second? You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Davis?
Yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we extend our meeting beyond ten-thirty.
Okay. To a time to be determined, or you want to stipulate an hour?
I would like to say eleven.
Eleven. All right, let's try for eleven. I think we can do that. But we will move forward. Everyone agrees with that? Okay?
Sure.
Do you need a second?
I'll second. Eleven.
I don't know. I think it's a consensus thing, isn't it? I think we all agree.
Close enough.
Okay. Twelve A. We're moving twelve A up on the agenda. This is a public hearing, adoption of the five-year implementation and ten-year housing compliance plan for the San Carlos redevelopment project area.
Mayor and members of council, periodically, the City of San Carlos Redevelopment Agency adopts a five-year redevelopment plan, and we're here before you tonight to meet that statutory requirement. And what I thought I would do is, since Frank Spevisak from RSG is here and he and his staff prepared this plan, I was going to turn the dice over to him and let him present it. So with that, Frank, if you'd come forward.
Honorable chair and members of the agency, I'm Frank Spevisak, and I worked with your staff in preparing this plan. As Brian mentioned, this plan is required by statute, and it sets forth a blueprint or a guidepost of what the agency would do during the next five years in the arena of redevelopment, infrastructure improvements, and affordable housing. As you may note in this plan, a lot of the activities that are outlined here are planning activities versus actual projects. The reason being is that the master plan of drainage is underway, east side specific plan's underway, there's discussions about some of the agency holdings in the downtown area that still needs to be vetted, and as such, this plan focuses on doing planning activities and reserving up to seven million dollars of the projected revenue in the redevelopment fund and four million dollars of the projected revenue in the housing fund for specific projects. By adopting this plan tonight, you're not stating in concrete that these are the things that you would do, in that the law provides that this plan can be amended through a public hearing process like we're doing tonight, so that projects can be added or expenditure programs can be modified and priorities modified in order to accommodate the then-identified needs. In addition, in two and a half years from now, or a little sooner than that, this plan will be subject to a midterm review, at which time we can look at progress, or you can look at progress made towards achieving what you're doing here, modifying the goals, updating the financial projections, and the like. So again, we're bringing this forward for consideration tonight, and under the redevelopment law, a public hearing must be held to gain comment before it's finally considered. law, a public hearing must be held to gain comment before it's finally considered for adoption by the agency board. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Spevak. Do we have questions for the presenter?
I had a couple of questions, actually. The first has to do with, this is a five-year implementation plan from 2005 through 2009. We're almost to 2007. So I guess, how, what's the statute around how quickly we need to get this plan in place after, or is it every five years we're supposed to do this?
It's supposed to be every five years. The last update in terms of this plan should have occurred by December of 2004. It didn't occur, so that's why the timeframe runs from 2004 through 2009.
You mean 2005 through 2009?
Fiscal year 2004, '05.
Okay. My second question actually has, so that's why it's before us this evening, and the idea would be to get this in place as quickly as possible to bring us into compliance.
Yes, ma'am.
The second question I have with the non-housing revenue projections, was looking through that and noticed that there were relatively few expenditures within the years 2005 through 2006 based on the revenue forecast. Is that because we actually weren't doing anything? So it's actually sort of capturing that? Or it's just that there were not any forecasts that were put into place for those?
Basically, for 2004, '05, and 2005, '06, we used the adopted budgets of the redevelopment agency to come up with the expenditure program. So those reflect what was in the budget for the agency. Moving forward, we then worked with staff to identify potential expenditures for the out years.
Then I noticed that there seems to be quite a dramatic, well, $130,000 increase in personnel in 2006, 2007. And maybe this question has to do with staff, which is more to the budget around the specifics behind this. Are we looking at actual staff tie, or additional staff for the redevelopment agency that we're funding out of this, or we're using existing staff and using redevelopment funds for funding those positions?
I'm sorry, I was out of the room and just walked in, so I don't know the specific page that you're referring to, but...
Yeah, I'm looking actually on page eight. It's for 2006, 2007. The personnel cost is projected to be $451,000, which is up over $326,000 for the prior year, and which is up from $287 for the year even prior to that. So I'm just, was interested in understanding the additional cost associated with personnel and what they were going to be doing. Is this not a budget, I guess?
This is a five-year forecast within the plan, and I'm sure it's anticipating normal growth, including the funding of specific positions within the city that are funded from redevelopment sources, such as a portion of the economic development manager position, as well as a portion of our planning budget that handles the housing functions.
But those have been in past years? That's been consistent?
They have been funded in past years and relatively consistent, yes.
Okay, so will the actual budgets for the redevelopment come before this council in, like, the January, February timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I can hold my questions until that. So jumping back to this document, my next question has to do with, I don't get a very good understanding of how the different implementation actions were prioritized with redevelopment amounts earmarked to them.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically, I was looking at, for example, the $250,000 estimated to do a study of South Plaza. And I don't recall, as a council, kind of talking about priorities of how these projects might be allocated and funds estimated against them.
Basically, what we did is we worked with staff to identify potential redevelopment initiatives, in that then we looked at what past experience has been for doing some of the thoughts or the initiatives that were described here and came up with these budget amounts. If you decide to move forward with these specific projects, that'll be brought back for your consideration, both in the redevelopment agency budget, as well as as those specific projects are designed and brought forward for your review. So what we have listed here are items that, based upon staff's review of where you would like to go, were identified as included in this plan. Part of our purpose tonight is to gain further input on these projects and these priorities, and then this plan can be modified and brought back for final adoption if necessary.
Okay. I had talked to our city manager, Mark Weiss, actually, before this meeting, because I was quite concerned about some of the projects that were listed here. And he mentioned that indeed, we could, as a council, adopt this this evening and then bring it back with, after we've had a chance to discuss the different projects that are listed here, to actually amend it to what we, as we feel, or as we saw fit as a redevelopment agency. So I certainly don't think we've got the necessary agenda time this evening to really to do that to the level that I would actually like to do that to. Because as an agency, we haven't really talked about the types of projects we'd like to see within the redevelopment area, or how we'd like to see those funds spent. Seeing as we're about two years behind the eight ball on this document already, I don't want to hold up the adoption of it, but I do feel pretty uncomfortable having this go into place and then not having it be re-reviewed by council sometime before the budgetary cycle. And then my last question actually has to do with the housing element. I'm looking at page 21. I noticed that the expenditures for housing set-aside funds is, listed as zero. Do we have a current fund balance of how much housing set-aside funds we actually do have?
Basically, we started this fiscal year with a fund balance of roughly $3.6 million. And so that fund balance is being carried over, plus then the revenue that's shown on the table.
So, I'm sorry, were you looking at the table on page 17?
Yes.
Oh, I see, the 20% housing, no. So the housing set-aside funds are not kept separate? They're just put into the overall housing fund?
Right. They're separated from the overall redevelopment revenues and kept in the housing fund, but yes, they are part of that.
I guess to clarify through the chair, there's really two sources of housing redevelopment funds. There's about $880,000 roughly estimated in the 20% set-aside that I believe Councilmember Teagle Doherty's talking about. Then there's an additional $2.6 million in the RDA housing bond funds. Those are the funds, you'll recall, that we issued bonds for a number of years ago to fund the San Carlos Elms Land acquisition and project. And since that project's been running at a surplus for a number of years, those monies would be available to you for other housing-related projects. So the aggregate number that Mr. Spevisak is talking about is correct. There is over $3 million in total, but only a fraction of that is the 20% set-aside, I believe, the council members are referring to.
And the reason, actually, the reason why I ask is because I was looking at the affordable housing program that's listed on page 13 and 14. And it looks like, all told, we're looking at spending perhaps $600,000, with the majority of that going into our first-time homebuyer mortgage assistance program, which continually gets paid back. And it would be nice to see some additional projects that actually look at starting to utilize some of the, either the housing set-aside funds for affordable housing projects within our community, or coming up with a few more projects where maybe based on staff's recommendations, we could actually start to utilize some of those funds, rather than letting them just continue to collect and to grow.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Comments?
So I have a question on the Railroad Depot development. I know that this is, I think, from what I understand, this is intended to be a broad scope of possible projects, and it's not prioritized. However, in the expenditures in the budget, I believe that it shows in this fiscal year that we'd spend $100,000 on the Railroad Depot development. Do I read that correctly?
That's correct. It's been budgeted for this year, but monies haven't been spent.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Weiss, but I don't remember us having discussion about that, and it's money that's going to be spent in the next six months, or just, I understand that these can be reviewed and we can sort of pass on it or whatever, but that one just surprised me because of all of these. It's sort of like, boy, we must have been working hard on that one, and it got by me.
I think, in all honesty, that is one project that we've known had the potential of coming along for some time now. And it's been delayed, from our perspective, and I mean, gosh, when I first got here, a little over a year ago, it was a project that was out there that was anticipated, I think, by staff, and then was, from our perspective, somewhat dormant for a good period of time. And so there has always been some thought that there might be potential for the city to actually become more of an aggressive partner with the applicant there. And certainly, if you were to do that, $100,000 wouldn't go very far. But the thought was, is that if we wanted to become a more aggressive partner, and if the applicant was willing to have us be a more aggressive partner, that having some funds in this category would be appropriate for planning purposes first and foremost, but secondarily then towards some seed money, if you will, to actually formulate a more aggressive plan.
Perhaps for, and I think I can speak for Councilmember Grisilli, that I don't believe either one of us have gotten any information on this at all. So it may have pre-existed, you know, our involvement, but I certainly would feel at a deficit to, I couldn't even speak to it if you asked me one question about it at this point, other than some of the stuff I read or some of the hearings I went to before. So all I would ask is, if this is imminent, that maybe I get a chance to do a little homework in advance and get some information on the project so we can, if, I don't mean...
No, I mean, and the reason I'm smiling is because, you know, my understanding, again, I'm walking into this, and I still like to refer to myself as the new city manager, because I feel some comfort in that, I don't know why. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, a year ago, it was my understanding when I got here, that there had been a series of public meetings, a committee, that there had been some rather detailed discussions about amenities that the city, you know, with citizen participation and the like. That had all happened previous to my arrival. And yet, for virtually the first year that I was here, there, we were anticipating an application. I talked with Mr. Scanlon and had just a very brief discussion about the fact that an application would be imminent. And yet, didn't have really a meeting to what, we sat down and looked at some schematics but a couple of weeks ago. And at that point, it was not even in a form of being an application yet. It was, matter of fact, we looked at some schematics, but left everything there for fear that it wasn't ready for any kind of distribution yet. So it was a bit of a surprise to us, even at the staff level, that there was this much public discussion following that meeting, in a very public way, because we had no application. And now, just within the last week, I believe, gotten a pre-application submittal for that project. So...
Again, not to belabor the point, I would like, if we're going to consider in the next six months, I'd like information sooner rather than later, so I can start to get an understanding of it. It's just, it's an enormous project, you know, 200 residential units, or whatever it is on here. So, please, at your, and then the only other thing, in terms of accuracy, on South Plaza, I don't believe we're still going to be considering a loading dock there. So if we want to approve this, I would just move to strike loading dock. I don't think we're going to need that anytime soon.
Very good.
Perhaps a small point, nevertheless.
$250,000 for a study of a parking plaza sure seems like a heck of a lot of money to me.
Look, but let's bear in mind, this is all budget and plan, and any expenditure comes back to us, you know, well in advance before we're expected to approve. The point here, as we contracted for this report, is to get the report out. We're two years behind. And I think they've done the job they did. So, Bob?
Again, I don't mean to be the monkey-wrench guy, but I guess I missed this whole thing. I guess I misunderstood this whole process. I didn't know we were two years behind. I don't know the immense detail that's in this. I'm not voting for this tonight, because unless we want to stay here till about midnight or 12:30 and talk about it, I'll go over item by item. But I can't vote for something, even though it's in tentative form. I mean, no, this is not a reflection on the report, don't get me wrong, but I, this seems like an immense project, and we're sort of going, oh, we'll get back to it, you know, we're going to vote on, I don't know, I'm confused on this. Maybe someone can educate me, but I'm very uncomfortable with this whole thing. Sort of back, coming on what Councilwoman Doherty said, this is a big project. Why it was delayed two years, I wasn't, as the man said, I wasn't here. But I just, I just think this is way too big a thing to be spending 15 minutes at 10:30 at night deciding what to do. But that's my comment, so.
Councilmember Growcott?
Well, I would concur with Mr. Grisilli and Ms. Doherty that perhaps we re-agendize this and get some deep discussion on it. I understand that, you know, a lot of it's just planning and planning for something, and a lot of these things are simply placeholders. The comment I was going to make, especially if we were going to vote on this, was, you know, we've beaten up South Plaza not as much as we can beat the darn thing up. And John Baer tried to make a go at it, didn't work. I think we should just take it out of here and use the 250,000. The note I put in here from when I read it the other day was, drop this project, the 250,000 that goes with it, and emphasize that money or use that money elsewhere, like on the El Camino or the railroad project or something. But I think that would take some discussion to come up with what we would do with that 250. But yeah, I think South Plaza is, and I understand why it's in there. I'm not criticizing the report either. It's in there because it's always been in there. And until you hear from us, you wouldn't know any better. But I think we've failed on that miserably, not because we failed on it, but because it just doesn't work. We're trying to put a square peg in a round hole. And I think we could, we could use our, that money elsewhere. So, yeah, I'd be for, Mr. Mayor, I'd be for re-agendizing this item, and let's give it some due discussion.
So far, you're not doing too well. Would you like to...
Well, I mean, what I would do by way of an explanation is, like Councilmember Grisilli mentioned, we're in a reardest of not having a plan that's been adopted. It happened. We got into this position before a lot of us got here, or we're in this predicament, if you will, and are doing our best to expedite a plan for prompt consideration, so that we can come into compliance with the law. And certainly, at the staff level, with RSG's assistance, we've put together a plan that is, I think, as representative of the current projects that the city had in place when we came on board, with as much staff input as we could muster in a short period of time in order to try and put good-faith estimates in place that might allow us to have a rather broad framework from which to move forward, with the thought that once we have a plan in place, certainly we can always modify it and bring it back for amendment. We understand that if, you know, this is, it's a, the redevelopment project is an important component of the city's overall planning activities. And we can understand the council's wish to spend more time on it, either tonight or at a future meeting. We're looking for feedback as to, you know, major shifts that we should be contemplating in when we bring it back. We can either do that without the plan in place, and it was our hope, frankly, that we could get a plan in place soon, and frankly, before the auditors were making comments on the state of the city's financials. And we're moving it as quickly forward with those considerations in mind. But if we want to re-agendize it for the next meeting and have more discussion on it, we're more than happy to accommodate that request.
Mark, can I ask you a question, just to follow up? If, once this document is approved, and I'm not saying whether it's approved tonight or at some time in the future, is it, does the state then have to certify it, or is that the housing element that they have to certify?
I would defer to Frank.
Is this just going to collect dust up on a shelf someplace?
Basically, it does not... Basically, it does not go to the state. What happens is that when the auditors come in and do the financial audit, this is part of their management report to see whether or not the agency has adopted its five-year plan. So, it doesn't go to the state, it just becomes part of the audit document itself.
And when is this audit due to occur? Because I mean, I think just...
Well, they're trying to wrap it up right now, actually, by the end of this month. They're onsite, and so, you know, if the fact that we are reporting that we're working on it, it is a good thing. If it were adopted, that would be better.
Well, Sue, the chair, isn't, aren't we already a year behind, wasn't it already in, or was it? I, maybe a question, wasn't it in our management report last year, then? We don't do an audit every two years, I assume we do an audit every year.
That's correct. I'm not sure whether or not it was noted or not, and I don't see Jeff here in the audience, but...
He's here, but he's probably a newbie like we are.
Looks like he's nodding, as though he thinks it was noted.
Okay.
If it wasn't, it probably should have been.
Okay, right.
Well, just speaking for myself, I've been around a little longer than some of you, but I guess all of you at this point, but these are familiar items, I don't, you know, recall the amounts, but, you know, I have seen the entries, and I'm not, I don't have a problem of accepting the report and moving forward, but I do have issues in terms of what we designated, and how much we spend, and so forth. So, I do say as a starting point, it's a platform to move forward. However, if the consensus is that we should think more about it before we approve it, then I would suggest we schedule it for an early discussion, so that we can, we can get on with it. Considering the delay, we do need to move it forward.
Well, I would, I mean, I, Tom, I agree with you, that a lot of these items are things that we've seen before, that they're not stuff that staff has just made up, just to put, to fill a couple of pages in a document. Whether or not I agree with the dollar, I think mostly what I had an issue with was the dollar amounts associated with some of these line items, not necessarily the line items themselves in general. And I do think it's probably time for us to actually sit as a redevelopment agency, and to have a presentation by staff about the redevelopment agency, especially with two relatively new council members onboard, what is the project area, what is a redevelopment agency, how can the funds be used, all of that kind of stuff that, for some of us that have been on council longer, we've gotten the benefit of that through other redevelopment agency meetings. Having said that, I think, I mean, I think that we should probably move this ahead and approve it, just so that we can get it at least on file. I do believe very strongly that we need to, following that meeting, and certainly before any budgets are set, really have a meeting that just focuses on, given the composition of this council, where the priorities are, and how the money should be spent or allocated. I mean, it may be that we end up not spending as much in the redevelopment agency over the next four years, or three to four years, but we actually spend more focus on some of the housing money, or it may be the other way. But I think that we owe it to ourselves as a council, and to the city as a whole, to really sit down and take the time to have that discussion. Because redevelopment agency funds, we really have not spent, I think, enough time on with this council, or this redevelopment agency, to understand how the funds can be used, and how we can start to look at allocating staff time or funds against projects specifically.
Okay, so while you all ponder this, this is a public hearing, and is there any member of the audience, or the public, who would like to speak to this issue?
Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, there wasn't much time to ponder the issue, but...
I guess what I would appreciate is maybe the opportunity for me to ask a few questions of the city manager over the course of the next couple of weeks, before we have our next council, maybe re-agendize it, so I can get more familiar with some of the components of this particular plan. And it sounds like there's some feedback from the rest of the council, excuse me, the rest of the agency, that perhaps may result in some refining of some of the information in this. But I realize that it's broad in scope, but it is a five-year implementation plan that I think we should, you know, I'm not, there's a certain time period you want to get it done in, but we also want to be sort of conscientious about the way in which we undertake it. And there's just a couple of things that I might ask a few more questions about, and perhaps it will advise some of the timing of this, perhaps some of the dollar amounts, it seems like there's more than one person's questions. So, maybe we can work through some of our questions, perhaps individually, with you over the course of the next couple of weeks, and then we bring this back to council, and perhaps then we can implement it as a broad scope document. But it seems like maybe it'd be nice to be a little bit more measured in the way that we adopt this.
I'm thinking here is some consensus about bringing this back the first meeting in December.
I'd make a motion to that extent.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded, to bring it back the first week in December. We'll take a look at the agenda. I think there's, I think Eng was right, there's some sense of need to bring all council members up to speed on redevelopment agency and housing issues. That's probably going to take more than time than we want to give at the next meeting, however, perhaps we can find enough time to answer the prevailing questions, and then move this document forward at that point. So, in favor of deferring until the next meeting?
So, are we continuing this?
We're continuing.
We need to reopen the public hearing, right, to continue it?
May as well, in case there are some people that do want to speak to it.
I would move to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All right, the public hearing is reopened, and we have agreement that this matter will be continued?
I would move to continue the redevelopment agency 12A item on the adoption of the five-year implementation plan to our next council, our next redevelopment agency meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carried. All right. It's now 11 o'clock, we're not quite there yet. Would someone like to move that we go to 11:15?
So moved.
Second?
Seven.
In favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Item 11A.
I've discussed on that, I'd like to keep it to 15 minutes if we can. Thank you.
Well, if we can, we can.
If we can't, we can't. I'm just saying we can prepare for, to push it to the next meeting after that, by my assessment.
This is one of the rosy, fine points of what we do, the next item, we're taking care of Laurel Street. Barry, thanks for hanging around.
Mayor Davis, members of the council. You have before you a report that refers to ongoing discussions between members of the city council, the city manager, and the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, about potential enhancements to Laurel Street, and to the two blocks of St. Carlos Avenue. As iterated here in the report, the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of Laurel, and the 1100 and 1200 blocks of St. Carlos Avenue, these are the blocks that also host the Chamber of Commerce annual art and wine fair. And the discussions of possible ways to enhance Laurel Street really center around the appearance with things like power washing the sidewalks, garbage can pickups more often, improved vegetation, the hanging baskets of the planters, et cetera, as well as some other different ideas that have come up. The chamber has come forward, and they've offered to pay for one power washing of the sidewalks one time a year, and as requested, the city pick up the other one, so that it's done twice a year. And as mentioned, that is one of the many items discussed as possible enhancements. These will require cost, most of them will require cost, and so, what we're asking the council to give us direction on tonight is to authorize staff to develop an enhanced maintenance program for the potential improvements in those five blocks, and return to you at the mid-year budget hearing with the budget adjustments that'll be required to implement the plan. We would envision returning to you with a menu of items to allow the council to pick and choose which items you would wish to spend the money on. And at this point, I'd be happy to entertain.
Very good, and that would be reflected in the mid-year budget?
I'm sorry?
In the mid-year budget cycle is where we would address the cost of all this?
Correct.
All right, okay. Any questions for Barry?
I would just like to thank Cheryl from the chamber for taking the time to actually have this dialogue and the discussion on the ways we can improve our downtown. A lot of us sort of drive by, it's kind of like the wall that needs to be painted, the more you drive by or to walk by it, the less dirt you see. So, sometimes it just takes someone, you know, stepping up and saying, hey, maybe we ought to take a closer look, to really identify that we could probably do a better job of cleaning it up, and sprucing it up a bit. So, thanks, Cheryl, and staff as well.
Kathleen, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Kathleen Lynch has graciously stayed to speak on this issue. We need to hear you, so could you come up?
I concur with Councilwoman Doherty. We spent a lot of money, we made some mistakes on Laurel, but we spent a lot of money to improve it, to make it look nice. And the one thing, when you look at other cities, whether it even be part of Redwood City, whether it be Palo Alto, Burlingame a good example, they spent a lot of money on their planters. They take care of them. Our planters look downright shoddy, and rather, very tacky, they really do, they look tacky. So, we either take the money and the time, and when, I know we don't have a full-time arborist, and there's all these discussions about our landscapers, but either we take the time and the money to keep them looking nice, either with the help of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you, what are you, Chamber of Commerce, or we take them down. They don't, there's no uniform to them, they look shoddy, and they have not looked good since about the first, second month that they were put up. So, I concur wholeheartedly, if we're going to do anything to improve our little town, let's make it look nice with what we have.
Thank you very much. Yes, Bob?
I just want to make a motion to take alternative one, to authorize the staff to work on the program.
Second.
Let's see, we probably have a little call on this, Christine?
Councilmember Gohkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teagle Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Enthusiastically, yes, I think this is wonderful. So, moving on, consideration of the council-commission liaison program. Counselors, our staff is recommending that, I think, we authorize the city council liaison program, in that we assign various council members to various commissions as a liaison, and...
Or we could just designate Brad.
Well, we could designate Brad. We might want to hear from Brad before we designate Brad, however. I'll rely on council's better judgment.
I would think that option one, I think, I don't know, we can pick him tonight, but perhaps we can have this, or we would choose which person does which.
I think at our next meeting, we need to do this, as well as other assignments apart from council. So, keep this list in front of you, and decide which one you'd like to participate in, one or two, and we'll take it from there.
Well, I was, I mean, I read through the staff report, and in general, I mean, I disagreed with the designating the vice mayor as the only liaison, because having been in that position, there's just, there's so much work for one person, there's, unless you're Bob Grisilli, you can't possibly make all of those committee meetings. And I don't know, I guess my question is, is that, you know, do we really want to designate a city council member to serve as a liaison to attend each one of these meetings? Because as a commissioner, having a city council member at every single one of your meetings can be a blessing or a curse. And to be quite honest, I don't think that that's really what was intended by this. I think it's really more, kind of if they want to, if the chair of the planning commission, for example, wants to bounce something off a city council member, who's their city council member? And I would, from that standpoint, I would almost suggest that we maybe not just have one, but perhaps have two, because, for example, Bob and I have both been on planning commission, and so, we may be better able to talk about some of the things that planning commission might come up with, whereas there may be others that, you know, if someone called in, I got, I don't want to say stuck, but if I got put on the BPAC committee, I would be entirely the wrong person to give them council direction or be a liaison, so...
Boy, the senior citizen one, probably.
Well, I'm just picking these out of a hat, you know?
Noted.
So, I'm just thinking, I'm guessing, I'm wondering, I would like to have a little bit more discussion than just automatically designating a person, but just a really, a little bit more around what is expected, and I think it probably varies based on the commission, and based on the individual council member.
I think you're right, I think it does vary, but I don't see the liaison going to every meeting.
No, I don't either.
I see them being available for discussion with the chair of the group. I think periodically checking in and seeing how things are going is good, but I see it as rather informal relationship, but something that can be used to the advantage of both parties, should something be not going right. You know, as we met with the commissions, you know, we don't see enough of you guys, we don't hear enough of you, we don't know what you want us to do. I think if we have the liaison, they meet periodically together, a lot of that can go away. So, I see it as periodic and informal, but there's an assignment, and, you know, bear in mind that this is our, this is our group, and we plug in and have a feeling of what's happening.
I think it's really important that we do something, some sort of liaison program, and maybe good to discuss the components of it, perhaps a little bit more detail, and maybe some combination of something slightly formal, like, you know, twice a year, or once a quarter, go to one of the meetings, just to, you know, be up to speed on what they're talking about, and then be sort of the designated go-to person. I might actually suggest that we rotate, you know, the assignment, so that there is more exposure to the different commissions. There's, one thing is exploit your strengths, the other thing is to sort of back that up with familiarity between commissions and council members, which might be a nice thing as well, so, and the idea of putting two, we might be able to do that sort of a thing. But right now, we really have nothing formal, and there's what I would consider to be sort of a lack of communication, because of the, just because of the format, the way we do it. So, anything to increase that, and increase the way that we work together with the commissions, I think will help some of this, we talk a lot about community involvement and community input, and our commissions are our first line of community input and community involvement. So, I'd strongly favor us doing a council-commission liaison program, maybe we can discuss the details.
Actually, I was going to suggest that maybe at our next meeting, in addition to coming up with commissions that you'd like to be a liaison to, and maybe pick three, so that if there's duplicates, we can talk about it, but then also, perhaps some idea around the type of role that liaison would play. I know, Tom, you were very active in EDAC for many years, and you were at every meeting, didn't say much, sat in the back, and that was always, you know, quite helpful versus like a planning commission, which is a much more formal type of setting, formal type of meeting, where there may not, that may not be the appropriate level of involvement, is to go and just sit at the meetings, but it may be more, you just kind of sit with the, go have coffee with the planning commissioner, or planning commission chair, you know, once a quarter type of thing. So, maybe just at the next meeting, we can talk about the different committees, or commissions a bit, and what kind of liaison role might be appropriate for the various commissions.
Okay. So, I think the idea is good, pick three you like, and we'll barter out those that are duplicates, and we have still discussion about expectations.
Would you like a motion on establishing a city council-commission liaison program?
Good idea.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Should we maybe email Christine with our commissions, just to kind of, so she can compile them, and make it easy for our next meeting? So that, for example, if we've got, you know, five people all wanting to do art and culture, that we maybe get somebody to switch to another one?
Gives a head start on the discussion.
Yeah.
All right, take care of that, moving along, 11C, got a resolution for adopting a new salary schedule for the clerical unit?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is concerning the Ask Me Clerical Group memorandum of understanding. In August 2004, the city council authorized the adoption of this MOU for a four-year duration. Some of the major terms of the MOU included, for the first two years, a salary freeze, in the third year, which is this year, called for an equity survey to be conducted. That survey has been conducted, it showed several positions slightly below market, which for the city would be the midpoint in the 15-city survey. The cumulative cost of all the positions that are below market, on an annual basis to the city, is $5,218. That money exists within the existing budget. Staff recommends the city council approve the attached... Staff recommends the city council approve the attached resolution amending the salary and benefits schedule for the clerical unit to be effective November 1st, 2006.
Thank you, Joe.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Joe?
I would.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Move adoption of resolution number 2006-81, establishing a new pay schedule for certain city employees in the clerical unit, based on staff report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Dougherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. And that brings us to item 13, adjournment.
Through the chair, just want to note one thing, that city manager Weiss got a hole-in-one last week. And so what I'm wondering is, maybe we can do some sort of a golf tournament. You're my guy. And if anybody would like to challenge us, I just would like to lay that down.
I'll take Bob Land's own. He's probably due for a hole-in-one.
Well, with that bit of enjoyment, we'll adjourn.